But we just wanted to welcome you and say we are so glad you're here. And we hope that our presentation today will help you decide if God is calling you to be on a school board or not. But we're going to open with prayer because it's probably the most important thing that
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for all the work you're doing in the earth. God, we thank you for the things we see and especially for the things we don't see. God, I thank you for every person in this room and the calling that you have on their lives. Lord, I thank you for discernment and wisdom. And I pray that as those of us who've had some experience speak, that everyone would know in their hearts that this is what you're calling them to do. So, Lord, we bless you today and we thank you for pouring your blessings on us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Susan. Well, I want to introduce the presenters today and a very special person that is here because it's her birthday. So, we put her back in the corner. But I'm going to start with Susan who led our prayer. Susan Galindo is a minister and she is the -- I have her bio, but -- and I'll just read it because she wrote it so well, or someone did. Said, "Susan Galindo has spent her life dedicated to God, her family, and the special needs community. Susan served on the Northeast Independent District School Board for eight years and the last two years as board president. And so, she brings all the credibility to our group. And she's also the former principal of River City Christian School. And now she serves as the special needs ministry director for University United Methodist Church. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but that church has probably the best program for special needs kiddos, our people, and children and adults in the city. When I was a director at Oak Hills Church, parents would come to me with special needs children and I'd say, 'We'd love to have you here, but if you really want a program for your son or daughter, go to University United Methodist.' Yeah, it was hard to send them to the Methodist Church, but we did it. Oh, anyway, I'm just so thankful for what Susan has done. She has her bachelor's in education in the hearing impaired speech science from the University of Texas and a master's in organizational leadership from Our Lady of the Lake University. And she and her husband Jerry, and she calls him her wonderful husband, isn't that sweet? They have three grown boys, two grandchildren, and she loves them all the most, but she also is a horse lover. So, if you ever see her in her truck pulling a horse trailer, you'll know. But the other thing that she just told me is that she's been nominated for the outstanding minister, evangelist, evangelistic minister.
Evangelist of the Year.
Oh, evangelist of the year for the United Methodist Church. Is that awesome?
Crazy.
So, we're proud of that. The other, at the back table, we have Harold Teague. And most of you know Harold. And Harold was one of the co-founders of SACLF. And he also worked with for many years as the church growth consultant and director for the San Antonio Baptist Association, which if you're not aware, they have about 290 churches in their association. And so, he worked with all those ministers. And then he also helped to get SACLF off the ground and running. And that in itself was quite an accomplishment. And he has a bachelor's from Baylor. And I'm telling you all, all of this, so you'll know that the team is very educated and we are supposed to know what we're doing. So, that, you know, keep that in mind. We have all the credentials. But as you all are well aware, credentials doesn't really make you that competent. It just as -- but it helps. But Harold has a bachelor's from Baylor and his master's of religious education is from Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary in Fort Worth. He also is a coach, a life coach, and he's licensed in that area and working on more and licensing as to become an international, with the International Coach Federation. And he is, he's written a couple of things like Mobilizing Believers now and Vital Church, a church revitalization process. And so, we're very, he's an educator and a pastor. And so, we're very thankful to have him here. And then next to Harold, we have Charlie Simon. And Charlie has a real varied background as well. He's been, he has a bachelor's and a master's. And then he's also been to Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary. But he's, he's been a teacher, a coach, a counselor in Northeast School District and Alamo Heights School District. And then after doing that for about 28 years, he became the senior pastor at Alamo Heights Baptist Church. And he did that for 17, 17 years.
Looking for a job now.
So, we're very, and we have a lot of fun talking about mutual friends that we have when we, when I worked in Northeast School District and my late husband. And because it's always fun to know these people that went on and did wonderful things and you go, "Oh, we knew them when," you know. And so, we're very happy to have Charlie with us. And my name is Ann Keel. And my background is speech mythology, like Susan. And then I have a master's in supervision, education, and then a PhD in leadership. And my husband says, because it's from Texas A&amp;M, and he says, "Oh, now we get handicap parking." And I went, "That is not nice." And so, anyway, so my husband is really thankful that we get special parking now because of my Aggie thing. And I wear the ring. But I was fortunate to spend a few years as a speech therapist and teacher. I taught reading at the high school level and then became a special education director for about 10 years and then a principal for about 16 and a superintendent for eight. And then when I retired from the superintendency, I went to work for Oak Hills Church as director of Care and Growth and Compassion Ministries. And I've since retired from that. And I'm like, Charlie, I'm looking for a job too. So, and last but totally not least, we have Natalie Hardy. Waves. Natalie is the executive director of City Reachers. And City Reachers is like a big umbrella organization that reaches across all denominational backgrounds and all over the city to bring Jesus into focus in this city. And SACLF comes under City Reachers. It's kind of one of the umbrella groups. And Natalie got to Texas just as soon as she could. She was born in Brooklyn and then went to school in Boston and has a law degree and I think practiced law for a while until God got hold of her. And Eileen Vincent, I think, was that?
God first.
Yes. And so, she ended up in San Antonio and gave up her law practice and became the director, executive director for City Reachers. And she's been here, what, about how many years? 18 years. So, we've been very blessed. So, she's really a Texan now. We're working on her Texas accent. But I'd like for Natalie to come up and tell us about, tell you all about the San Antonio Christian Leaders Forum. So, and happy birthday, Natalie.
Thank you so much. You bet. Well, we just want to just welcome all of you here. I'm going to take a picture of you before I sit down just to memorialize this auspicious group because you are really, really special people. I see you as special people called of God to serve Him, to advance His kingdom purposes. And we're doing that in the educational system. That's what we're talking about today. But I just believe that you're part of God's secret army in this city to do His will. And we're all called to advance the kingdom of God wherever we are. And as part of the mission of the San Antonio Christian Leaders Forum, as City Reachers, we have been praying for San Antonio for 20 years for every aspect of life in this city. We've been praying for everything that moves and even those things that don't move. How about that? And so, we really, we have a vision. We call it a sweeping move of God to cover the entirety of life in our city. And so, it's normal and I think understandable why the Lord would say, "Start the San Antonio Christian Leaders Forum" because all of that is based around the seven spheres that impact life in any community. And I need to read them to you because I tend to forget them because I don't have them lightly organized in my brain, but media, government, arts and entertainment, education, business, family, and the church. Actually, if you look at the original delineation of these seven spheres, they don't say the church, it says religion. Because religion does impact what people do. But as Christians, we make that seventh sphere the church because that's who we are. And so, we really want to see through the SACLF amazing and excellent initiatives developed in those seven spheres that have a positive impact on our community, a positive impact on this city. San Antonio has a prophetic destiny to impact the entire nation. I believe that what God does through us, the church, in the city of San Antonio is going to impact this country. And I know that sounds really big. We don't have to focus on that. We need to focus on San Antonio because what we do here in this city, God was going to transport it out one way or another to impact the entire nation. And so, what we're doing here is very, very important. There's no, nothing too small. You know, you throw a pebble in the water and the ripple effect goes out and out, that's what's going to happen with us. And so, every school board that you get onto is going to be positively impacted by the decisions that you help make. And so, I'm just believing God for, for what you're going to do as school board members. And a couple of other things. We see in education, that is such an important sphere in our, in our society because it impacts the way our young, our children teach, our think, and what they do. And we're talking here not only about public schools, we're talking about universities as well. And so, this, the way things are taught in the schools really does impact the way our young people function in society. And so, we really need to deal with that. So, I want to look at, read this, what I put here on my phone. When prayer was taken out of the schools, that changed everything. It changed everything. There was removed a consciousness of God and the law of God and the word of God. And we know how important the word of God is because that's the foundation for all that we believe and all that we do. It's not that we're trying necessarily in schools to get everybody saved, but as Christians, you know, public schools, all of that really came out of the church. Hospitals and all those things came out of the work of the church to educate and help people. And so, we're here as the Christian Leaders Forum to impact our public school system in the city of San Antonio through you guys. And so, we really want to make sure that the liberal ideologies that have permeated our educational system are dealt with through our service on boards. And all of the postmodern things that they teach, all of those things, we can deal with that as school board members. And the Lord, you know, the Lord always tells us, "The weapons of our warfare, they are not carnal. Not one of them is carnal, but they are mighty. God has made them mighty to the pulling down of strongholds." And so, we can serve God and it's like, it's going to be like, in my opinion, like an act of spiritual warfare serving on a board. Because you'll be entering the enemy lines, so to speak, getting behind the enemy lines and you see what the enemy is planning. And you can deal with these things through wise counsel and employing the truth of the word of God in all that you do as a school board member. So, we are trusting God to arm you through this four-phase training and to prepare you for how you will serve Him and serve the children of San Antonio by a position on the school board. So, thank you so much for registering for this. Thank you so much for coming to this. Thank you so much for preparing yourself to serve the Lord and serve the children of San Antonio through this training. I want to read one final quote to you. "A reintroduction of biblical truth and Bible-centric values is the key to renewal and restoration in America's failing educational system." So, you have a very, very important role. So, thank you so much for being here today, for taking this time out of your day in this lovely rainy day to come here to serve the Lord. So, I'm going to take this picture and then I'm going to step out. Bless you guys. Say, you want to get over there, Susan? Say, Jesus.
Jesus.
Get over here, Harold. Here we go. One, two, three, Jesus.
Jesus.
Awesome. Thank you so much. One more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Go celebrate.
Somebody after Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can click from, I don't have to put it behind my back or anything? Awesome.
There you go.
I know, right? So, we're going to be doing some real interactive things so y'all don't have to sit and listen to us blab the whole time. Plus, you'll get to know each other a little bit and we'll get to know you a little bit and that'll be a whole lot of fun. But on the table in front of you, you have index cards and we're going to be using those and the boxes. So, there's two different color index cards. On the white index card, if you can just write the information that's up here, your name, your email, your occupation, and what school district you reside in, if you can put that on the card, that'll be great. And we'll take that up, I'm assuming. And there's another, there's another card that's a different color and Harold's going to talk about that. Are you going to talk about it right now? Not right now. Okay. All righty. So, we'll give y'all a minute to get that filled in. And as soon as you're done, if you'll introduce yourselves to each other, that side of the room, y'all four and y'all four. And when we have time, we'll see if we can all introduce ourselves to each other. We want to make sure, try to stay on schedule.
Yep. Oops.
How did I do that? All right. Sorry about that. I must have my finger on it. I'm so ready.
Charlie, you have to be on the mic, otherwise the camera won't get you.
Have to be on the mic for the camera to get me. That's different. Okay.
Or hear you.
Okay. How many of you enjoyed elementary, middle school, high school? Nobody, two of you, okay? Well, you may need to rethink the school board stuff, but no, I'm just teasing. I loved elementary school. I grew up, my dad was in the Army and we were all over the world. Early days were spent in Salzburg of Austria. So, I was good friends with Julie Andrews and, no, I'm teasing. But grew up and loved high school. I tell people about college. I say, "I loved college. I went to Texas Tech and I spent three of the best years of my life as a sophomore at Texas Tech." So, I really, really did enjoy that. I'm going to ask you a quick question. We're going to spend just a few minutes, but what is the most important aspect or variable that you think is involved in being on the school board? How about children? Okay? I think the first step in what you do is to have a love for children. There, when I was in the school business for 28 years, there were a lot of times that I wondered about some of my students, "Lord, did you really create this kid?" You know? And wondered what needed to be done. I remember a story of a little girl, you just never know about kids, but it was a kindergarten class, it was going through a hospital, and the x-ray technician was showing them x-rays of broken bones. And he asked the group, he said, "Have any of you ever broken a bone?" Well, a cute little girl in a pink dress raised her hand and said, "I have." And he said, "Really?" And he said, "Did it hurt?" And she said, "No." And he said, "Well, you must just really be a brave little girl. What bone did you break?" And she said, "My sister's arm." So, you don't know about kids. But as you proceed through this, through this learning that hopefully we're going to give you today about serving on a school board, it's like Natalie said, that there's certainly a calling to this. I don't know if you could become a good teacher. I don't know if you can become a good administrator or even a good school board member without, Lord, really giving you a desire to serve in that capacity. I think each of you have a handout and there's a statement.
The handouts are in the box.
Oh, the handouts are in the box. Everything is in the box. If you don't find it, we're outside the box. I want to read you another quote that I found before we get into the icebreaker here on the second page and read a quote from Abe Lincoln. But a man by the name of William Ralph Eng said the following. He said, "The aim of education is knowledge of facts, but not of facts. The aim of education is knowledge, not of facts, but of values." There's a difference between facts and values. As Susan said earlier, you know, when prayer was taken out of schools, things changed. I often heard that as long as there were tests and vice principals, there would always be prayer in schools for some kids. And that's very true. Look at the icebreaker and I want you to reply to this. I want you to look at it and I want you to answer back to me and we'll take about five minutes on this and then we'll move along. But it says, "The philosophy of the schoolroom in one generation will be the philosophy of the government in the next. The philosophy in the schoolroom in one generation will be the philosophy of the government in the next." Give me some feedback of what you think, other than just yes.
That's what we're reaping now in leaders in our nation.
Quickly, what do you think the philosophy of the schoolroom is?
Pass the test.
Pass the test?
Whatever. Does that do what you need?
Okay. And how does that incorporate into an education situation?
The way everything is communicated, but those concerns to some, to myself, might be the way in which sex education is presented, the endorsement and approval of LGBT to the initiative and on the moment.
Do you think the standards have changed as far as philosophy is when most of us were in school as to the way it is now?
Much lower. Standards are much lower now.
Okay. And who determines that?
Well, is that the school board or is that?
I ask you first. You know, that's, that's a good question, but as we look at philosophy, that's going to have a big bearing or large bearing upon how you're, you're thinking about what you want to do. The focal point here is to have people that are going to be involved in a school board that are going to have like thinking and that are going to be governed by something that gives them direction. Prayerfully, what we're each looking at is to be directed through a relationship with Christ to make good decisions. We're going to look at it in a little bit different way in a few minutes, but do you think that'll work?
If you got a jury.
If what?
If you got a big jury on the school board.
Yeah.
If you got a jury, it's going to be.
What do you need to have in order for this philosophy to work? The philosophy that you're talking about, that what we grow in the schoolroom is what's going to be in our government?
Well, I think of what we have now, talking about that generation, is the hippie generation.
Now, be careful here. Okay. Susan, Susan used to be a hippie, so we're just going to be, okay.
But when you look at that philosophy, the main philosophy, the radical philosophy back then, love, not war, just accept, don't judge, blah, 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 those are the people in leadership. And we can see that you do have to judge. You do have to make judgments about things, but some don't want to.
What do you use to give you that direction?
The Bible.
Okay.
God.
Okay.
Awareness, that's great judgment one day.
Okay. These are going to be over the next couple of hours, things that we're going to get involved with as to where we are and why we believe what we believe. And I don't think you would be here if your principal was not based on a love and a relationship with Christ. Because that in essence, not only will Because that in essence not only will change school boards, but that will change America. So, we're gonna move on now, and Harold?
Good morning. Thank you, Charlie, for leading us in that discussion. Let me ask the question. You've got a green, um, index card in your box, again, in your box. So those who are box holders or box managers, if you'll take a, a green card and, and pass it to everyone around the table, I'd appreciate it. And behind me on the screen should be the question, "List three characteristics of an effective school board member." Is it? Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, thank you. So I want you to, Charlie asked you the question, what, what is it take and what do you need in order to be a school board member? So I want you to think in terms of, what are the characteristics that would, an effective school board member ought to demonstrate, ought to have in his or her pocket, ought to be natural for a leader?
You want those written on the green card?
Yes, I want those written on the green card, I'm sorry. Yeah, so take, take a moment and then we're gonna have a conversation about that. What are the three characteristics of an effective school board member? Okay, I'm seeing most of you are, at least on number three. Let's go ahead and begin this conversation. Who would be first? What is one characteristic that you see, that you believe is, ought to be characteristic of a, an effective school board member?
Character.
Character. How is that, what do you mean by that? Most of school board members are characters. In fact, I would suggest that all of us in this room are quite a character.
Integrity, trustworthiness, honor, honesty.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
I would say that, uh, the love of God and fear of His word would be number one.
The love of God and fear of His word, all right? Okay? Okay. Someone else? Yes, ma'am?
I don't have the same line, sorry, but a relationship with God.
A relationship, a personal relationship with God. In other words, I know Him personally, I have a relationship, I talked with Him this morning, I talked with Him through the day, I have a, a direct line of communication with the Father.
Can you say biblical worldview?
A biblical worldview? I don't know, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
All right? All right, a biblical worldview, yes, ma'am. Candace?
Constance.
Constance, yes, you too.
I'm led by Christ, but in that I'm including, you know, personal relationship and knowledge of the Word, character.
Okay.
And prayer and...
All right.
I need everything that should involve...
So you just described a bucket? With a lot of things in it, or a stew, if you will. All right, very good. Someone else? Yes, Si?
Articulate speaker.
An articulate speaker.
Yeah, knowledge or good grasp of the topics and issues.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Someone else?
I put, along those lines, I put effective communicator.
Okay, effective communicator.
Cause anything that goes on in the school board is gonna require being able to effectively communicate positions.
Okay.
Without, hopefully, I guess, without generating or engendering offense.
Okay, okay, all right, someone else?
I think valuing, well, loving children, which would include valuing their individual worth.
Valuing the individual worth of the child. Okay, all right? Okay. All right, other characteristics, yes, ma'am?
I, um, I put love of children, but also family.
Love of families and children, okay, very good. Someone else? What is the charac, effective characteristic of a school board member, Si?
I think I saw it on his green card, but I kinda had...
So you're gonna cheat and say, they say it for him? Yeah. Integrity.
Respectful, sort of your personality and how you treat everybody else on the board. You know, if you're a hothead or, uh, you can't resist it, you're not gonna gain any respect and maybe, uh, following of everybody.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay? Someone else wanna add? Yes, ma'am?
A boldness.
A boldness? Courage. Courage, boldness, yes, okay? One or two more?
The first question was, are you called to serve on the board? I know from personal experience that I've gotten involved with a lot of things, I think, called to. It wasn't very effective. So that would be very, very important. If you're called to this, then you're gonna be able to endure the persecution that comes with it.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate that comment. Okay, someone else?
I'm at the boldness for standing up for righteousness.
Okay, all right.
The word is patience, patience to realize that vision that you have, right? You know, start out as one on the board and then make another election to get second, another election to get majority, yeah, patience.
Yes, yes. And you know, once a decision comes up, a, a school board doesn't make a decision without a process in order to make that decision. So patience to endure the process of decision-making as well. Okay, someone else? Yes, ma'am?
For the third one, I put down vision for the future of the children.
Okay, okay. A positive vision for the future, sir?
Are you asking for all three right now or just the first one?
Oh, just, just one. What, what do you think the most?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to resonate with you here, you know, uh, uh, character and it's, uh, twin brother integrity.
Okay.
Because if you don't have those two, you don't, you don't need to worry about the other two.
Okay.
Uh, and, and you know, as far as, because character is character and I've seen a lot of people that are not Christians that I would trust with my, my life and my life. You know, and yet there's Christians, we know, we see them all the time, falling, you know, so, uh, there's, there's, you know, yes, biblical worldview is important versus, uh, you know, worldly, uh, you know, but I think, I think, uh, character and integrity, uh, you know, if you don't have that mixture.
Okay. Very good. Would anyone like to la, add one last comment?
Team player.
Team player, thank you for bringing that up. So critical to, um, to an effective school board member. I want you to keep these, this sheet, because we're gonna turn them in at the latter part of the day. We'd like to have a kind of a survey of your responses, but we're also gonna use the back for another question, so keep this handy and it's green so that you can spot it easily on your table. Susan, you're up next, dear.
No, I think I am.
Okay.
Let's see. I think it is Ian, but I'm right after you, so I'll just hang on.
That is the first mistake I've made today. Yes.
Well, this is our first one. Okay, okay. Oh, those were great answers that you all gave. Uh, I think that, um, as Susan and I, we were serving on the education team with the Leadership Forum and there were so many things brought up about what, what we need to do in education. And both of us being educators and her being primarily at the, a school board member and my role, uh, for eight years as a school superintendent, you know, it just kind of, I thought, you know, I saw too many board members that professed to follow Jesus that totally embarrassed me at board meetings. And because they would either pound on the table or scream or get angry or, or say rude things to people and I thought, you know, that's not the way Jesus would do it. And so maybe if we do a workshop or something like that and we could help people at least get a head start to understand the role of a school board member. And you all just kept hitting it on the head every time, that was great. But my job right now is to, um, tell you about, to give you an overview of the workshop today. We have scheduled it from nine until three, but because of the weather and because we just think it would be nice, because it's a Saturday, to see if we can kind of condense it and, and get you all out of here before. Uh, we'll have lunch and, uh, and then we'll kind of wrap up after lunch. But we've got, uh, in our planning of what to do with the workshop and how to do all this training, we came up with four phases and you heard Natalie referred to the four phases of training. And this is the first phase. And so what we want to do today is give you an overview, kind of a, I started to say 30,000 foot, but maybe, let's go to 10,000 foot overview of what a school, what the purpose of a school board, what do they do? And, uh, you know, why, why do they even exist? And, uh, so we thought Susan and I could do that, primarily Susan. And, uh, and then we thought, okay, if you're on a school board, what do you do with the information you receive? And what filters does it go through in your head before you respond? And so that's where worldview comes in. Because when we learn new information, it comes into our brain, but we have filters where we categorize everything and we want those filters, we would like to see that those filters, that the primary filter is that of Jesus. So that when information comes in, we filter it through that. And, uh, so, we're gonna talk about worldview. And Susan and I thought, well, you know, we probably should get a couple of pastors with us if we're gonna talk about Christian worldview. We felt like we could handle the education part, okay, but, you know, for credibility, so we have Harold and Charlie. They're, they're the credibility for the pastoral part. And then we wanna wrap it up and we'd like to be out of here by 1:45. So if that would be okay with you all, we'll just see. But we wanna make sure that your questions are answered, that you have a good understanding and then we'll tell you later this afternoon, uh, where we go from here. Okay, I'm gonna start with three frequently asked questions about being on a school board. So these are pretty general that people, um, that people might, may have. So the first one says, are there specific requirements that candidates have to meet to be a trustee? And we're gonna use the term trustee and school board member interchangeably 'cause that's what happens when you get on a board, you're called a trustee. And so, um, there are some specific requirements, mostly having to do with, um, where you live. Some districts are single-member districts, which means you, not only do you have to live in a district like Northeast or Northside, you have to live in a certain area of the school district. So, um, it just depends on your, like Northeast has seven, seven different single-member districts, but a district like, um, Southwest would only have one. So you can run at-large or you would have to live in a single-member district if, if you lived in a larger district. So, um, that's easy to find out if you just go to whatever district you live in, if you go to the website and you check, uh, look at the school board member, um, part of the website, you can see if they have a, uh, next to their name, if they have a district number or if it just says at-large. So that's, like, for me, when I ran, actually, by the time I made a decision to run, the mem, the district I lived in, which was District Three, um, the election was up for that district that year. So it was great, I didn't have to wait two years, but it's staggered. So you may have to wait a couple of years before you actually run, which is good, 'cause then you can get ready. And that's the second question, is residency, residency requirements, um, to run? And we just talked about that, and you have to be 18, yes? Oh, sorry, I missed it.
Uh, I was just, I was just wondering whether regarding the at-large position, I mean, who actually votes for an at-large seat since it's not in a district or...
It is in the district.
Well...
So... So like when you...
I'm in, I'm in, in E01 is the...
What school district are you in?
Northeast.
Okay. Oh, you're in, you're in the Area One?
Yes, it's Area One.
Mm-hmm.
So at-large, there's, so only the people living in O1 would vote for that seat?
Correct.
If it's an at-large position, who votes?
So, so that's a really good question. So when you go to the polls in District One and you, you can vote for the president and the, you know, the senators and all that and then in, in the, um, on the list, your name would be on there. But if you lived in District Two, his name wouldn't be on that one, on that, um, ballot.
So whose ballots does the at-large position...
It's on all of them.
So every ballot?
In that district. So if you lived in Southwest, it would be on all of the ballots in the Southwest School District, but it wouldn't be on the ballots in the Northeast School District.
So, uh, maybe this isn't the time, and I apologize...
That's okay.
But it, it would seem to me then that an at-large position would require a much larger campaign and budget and effort and more votes to be elected. Is that, is that reasonable, Susan?
It depends. I, I think in District Three where I was, there was 133,000 voters. So Southwest may not even have that many. I'm not sure. But it just depends on, on what area you live in. Mm-hmm. And the last one is, um, this is a really important question. Can someone be a candidate if they have a relative who is employed by the school district? Well, the state has some very specific, um, laws about nepotism. And, and so if you have a daughter or a son or a, a close relative who is employed by the school district that you live in, you are not able to run. Okay? I'm not sure about a granddaughter, but I'm, mm...
I think you'd have to check the...
Yeah, you'll have to check the laws and as we get in, as we get further down, we can, huh? State legislators.
The State Board of Education, you have the legislators who make laws in the State Board. It will go into that, uh, that's a part of the...
If you have a child, I'm just...
If you have a child, you can be on the school board. It's an employee, right? Yeah, if you have a child in the district, that's fine, or a grandchild in the district, that's fine. But if they're a staff member or they're employed by the district, that's when the nepotism law comes into effect. Yeah, yeah, it's pretty typical, right?
That's pretty standard.
Yep. All right, so those are the typical questions that people ask. Um, of course, you have to be a US citizen, you have to be 18. If you have a felony or something like that, that would disqualify you.
Can you run for a school board where you don't?
No. You have to live within the district that you represent, yeah.
There's a lot of charter schools?
Uh-huh.
Are those governed by the school board district?
No.
And so would there be a board trustees for a charter school?
Yes. But it's not a, a public office.
It's an appointment?
I'm, I'm not real sure how that works. It is, it's an appointment?
Yeah.
I'll serve at a charter school, not just ask...
Okay, so it's an appointed board for charter schools? Right.
Can you be on a charter school, wasn't it on a focused school or...
I would imagine you could do both. Mm-hmm.
Charter school is really challenging.
It might be considered a conflict of interest, but I was a principal of a Christian school when I got on the Northeast School Board, so, yeah. It was an interesting race, let me tell you. But, um, i- it's possible to do both. Yep.
Do we just call the school district to speak if your relatives are...
You can call, um, you can also look up... You can call, you can also look up on the TEA website, and we have that information at the, at the end of this presentation. You can look on the TEA website and just, in the search, put nepotism, and it would tell you. Yeah.
You know, you might explain right here, just to understand, the TEA is the government or the authorities of the state?
Yeah, the Texas Education Agency-
The one that makes the rules as far as the state is concerned for education.
Mm-hmm. That and the, and the State Board of Education. And we'll go into that, so you kind of understand what the hierarchy is when it comes to serving on a board. Those are some really good questions. Anyone else?
And we hope to cover that more.
Yeah.
I mean, we will cover more, Jeff, as soon as I'm finished speaking.
Come on.
I think I'm next.
Right now, I'm supposed to give you an overview, but we're just, I've given you somewhat of an overview of what we're going to do today. And now I want to just cover what I used to call housekeeping items. We're not going to take any breaks, since we want to get out early. And so that means, please feel free to take care of your creature comforts. And if you want more coffee, there's water back there, the restrooms are right next door. We're not going to have a break and then have you come back, just as you need to. And if you need to get up and stand up and walk around, that's okay, too. So, any questions about the, the day?
So now no lunch?
No, you will have lunch.
Yeah.
Unless you leave early.
And there's some tacos over there?
Thank you. I forgot to mention that. Thank you for bringing the tacos.
Yes, what?
There's some tacos in the back, if you're hungry. So, okay. Any other questions before we get moving into the real meat of our presentation? Okay, thank you. You're on.
All right.
So let's get into the nitty-gritty of what a school board does. So school boards are the, are designed to be the educational policy developing and approval body for a school district. They don't, they don't necessarily create policies, but they help develop policies and help, and they do approve or disapprove policies for the district. And that's, that's their main function. This next point is super important. School board members provide governance, not management. And we're going to talk about the difference of those two as we go along, but there is a big difference between the two, and it's really important to know what that difference is. Effective school board members work together with the superintendent. We, we always called it a team of eight. Most school boards are comprised of seven members. Austin ISD has nine, it's quite large.
Comella.
Comella has nine.
And Military has five.
And Military has five. So it depends on where you live and how many school board members you are. But it's really important to work with the superintendent and not against the superintendent. The school board is there to support his job and vice versa. He's there to support the school, school board members as well, he or she, is in Ann's So does anybody have any questions about any of those three? The superintendent, yes. The superintendent is an employee of the school district, and the school board only oversees one employee, and that's the superintendent. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. Uh-huh.
Could we, could you talk specifically about the situation in SAI SD with the accommodation policy for the L T community?
I'm-
Are you familiar with that at all?
I've heard some things about it. Since I've been off the board and moved out past Medina Lake, I haven't been involved in, in local politics like I was at some point. And those are, those are difficult issues. They're very difficult issues.
What, what my question is specifically, was it the superintendent that wanted to implement that policy of accommodating the L T community with open bathrooms and locker rooms?
Right. Yeah.
Or was it the school board that wanted to-
I'm not sure.
It could have been either, but if the superintendent recommended it, it maybe came from the state level, with the legalities and the law and the changes that are made at the state level, and then it comes down to the local. But it could have been the local board brought that in.
Yeah, I'm not real sure how that happened.
If it came down from the state level, wouldn't it go to all the school?
Yeah.
It would go to all.
Yeah.
But it's usually very broad, and so each district can then-
Interpret the law.
Interpretate, develop their own policy. And so, as far as San Antonio goes, there again, I don't know if it was the superintendent or the school board, but in order for it to get to the board, it had to begin somewhere. It could have been from the community.
Yeah.
And community members can request that they be heard before the board. Their district will have many committees that work on different issues, and maybe that component within the school system formulate that, present it to the superintendent.
It might be good, Ann, if you sat up here, and I'll hand you the mic, because he, some of these questions, yeah.
That's what I said, we'll cover, but those are excellent questions.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm, I'm just not sure the origin.
We were really involved in going to the school board meetings and speaking out against the policy.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes, sometimes it's that way. Yeah.
Can you give me a little bit more clarification on the difference between governance and management?
We're going to talk more about it. Yeah, we have a, a couple of slides on that one subject.
So, it sounds like the superintendent has an extremely large position.
Yes. Yes.
And he works with them, does not govern them. Who governs the superintendent?
We, and the school board manages the superintendent only, and the superintendent manages the school district. So, so school board members don't have any authority to walk into an elementary school. Is that wrong?
No.
Oh, did I do it again?
Yeah.
I'm telling you-
You may answer the question to me.
I gotta, gotta hand off the clicker to somebody who knows what they're doing.
Because, because right now, I think maybe we're all a little confused-
Okay.
-as to the hierarchy.
Okay. Let me go ahead and talk about it.
Like a diamond down.
Yes. And we'll get, we'll go, when we get to that slide, we'll just kind of run through it. But, so what happens is that the school board of seven people plus oversee one employee, and that's the superintendent. The superintendent oversees the entire school district, as far as management goes. So a school board member can't walk into a school and tell the principal, hey, I want you to blah, blah, blah. There's no authority that a school board member has to manage a particular school or a particular employee, only the superintendent. And there's, you've seen stories in the news, probably, where school board members have gone onto campuses and demanded that things go a certain way, or tried to use their influence to change something, but that's not what school board members are for. We provide governments for the, governance for the district, and we manage one person, and that's the superintendent. And that's it. And the superintendent's in charge of everything else. So-
That's a huge paradigm shift for me.
Yeah.
Because the school board doesn't really have much purpose.
Well, it has a lot of purpose, as far as approving policies for the school district, appointing people to different committees that make the policies.
If the superintendent wants something done, the school board can't really say-
The school board can vote against the superintendent? You can.
That's where the difference is, is in your vote.
Yeah.
If the superintendent makes a recommendation that this is what I would like to have, it will come before the school.
Right.
You know, he doesn't just allocate that everything and say it's going to happen, it's going to come back.
If it's, if it's a major thing.
And you saw, there's a lot of rules that go around a school board.
Right. So that, but that's a governance thing. Like, a superintendent's not going to go to a school board and say, hey, is it okay with you if I hire this person as a principal?
Right.
That's not, that's not the school board's place. That's why you hire the superintendent to make those kinds of decisions. But a superintendent will come to a school board and say, I'd like to have a bond election, or I'd like to increase taxes to help pay for new schools, or new programs, or give raises to teachers. There's all kinds of things that the superintendent will come to the school board for. But it's not going to be for management, it's going to be for governance. It's going to be for things that take a vote. Okay? Not staff decisions. Mm-hmm.
What about curriculum?
That's the State Board of Education. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but there's some policies, district-wide policies, that the school board has to-
The, the school board has some choice in some curriculum, but the overarching curriculum decisions are made at the state level. Yes.
My question, if I can, you know, that comes as a recommendation, rather than-
Let me speak to that very quickly. That curriculum matters, our curriculum suggestions come down from the legislature. That's why it's very important to vote. And, but the legislature to the state board, or it can just originate with the State Board of Education. And then that is trickled down to the local school board, or in way of a policy. And then the local board, you really can't go against the law, you have to follow the law and the policies that come down from the state board. And there are specific things that come down from Austin, and such as how many minutes you have to teach reading every day, how many minutes you teach P.E., fine arts. I mean, there, it's very specific. But the school district can add to it, but you can't take away from the minimum that comes from the state. But you can add.
And you remember when we tell graduation requirements, just-
Oh, yeah.
The districts can be different, and what they require through accreditation factors of basic policy, it does come out of legislation that says, you're going to have at least four years of that, or three years of that.
Right. And that, that's where the local board comes in, that is so important. What is going to be added above that? Because almost every district has choices above the very minimum.
Exactly.
So I thought of something. How long does a school board member rank?
Okay, so your term is four years. Mm-hmm.
It can be less if you choose.
Yeah, you can always, you can always step off, but, but a term is four years.
But they're staggered.
Correct. They are staggered. So every two years, there's an election for either three or four board members. Because it's staggered.
Can you imagine if they all went off at one time?
Yeah, no.
Like this, yeah, like this one time.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go to the next slide. And I think-
Constance.
Constance, as I said, an effective school board member has a vision for the children. And, and really, vision is, it's that ten thousand foot place where school board members exist and help develop the vision for the school district. And that's a really, really important core of how you make decisions. So once a vision is established, school boards can change them, they can modify them, they can stick with a vision. When I was on the board, we went through a huge transition where we changed our focus, changed our vision. I mean, it's always about kids, but how we, how we approach different things that we made decisions about. And it was a really wonderful process. But we involved a lot of the community, which is exactly what you want to do. You want to hear the community, you want to hear what their needs are. And that's why it's important that you live where you represent, because you have a thumb on the pulse of the community, so that you know what the issues are, and then you get to figure out a way to address those issues. The board demonstrates its commitment to the vision by using the guiding principles of that vision in all your deliberations and all your conversations, and there is a lot of conversations that are, that take place about different decisions and different policies on the school board. And, you know, you always keep those kids right in the middle, and what's best for them, and what they need to be successful in this world. Effective trustees do not have individuals, individual agendas separate from the shared vision. And sometimes it's kind of hard, because, you know, we have this passion for Christ and, and for the kids, but the, the vision kind of guides everything. And so if you have a different agenda, it's going to be really obvious to every, everybody on the board. And, and not saying that you don't stand up for things that are important to you, because that's really, really important. But at the same time, if you don't have consensus, nothing gets done. So if you have a separate agenda, it's not going to pass, because you have to have a quorum in order to, not a quorum, but you have to have a majority in order to pass a certain policy. So, yeah, Harold.
Would you give us an example of a vision, and then a contrary personal vision?
Well, I think probably any vision for any school district is going to be student achievement. You know, it might be worded a little differently, or approached a little differently, but student achievement is what you're, what you're really about, trying to get every child to be successful in school. So I don't know that any, any school board member would have an opposition to that, I don't think. But there may be certain things come up where someone wants to post the Ten Commandments, a teacher wants to put the Ten Commandments on their, on their wall. And as a believer, you know, we think that's a really great idea. But that is not something that most school districts would be comfortable with, or most school board members, or some superintendents might, some may not. And, and so we may be very vocal about that, but the rest of the school board may decide that that's not a good idea. And so, I mean, there's, there's times when I was on the school board where I felt a little alone, although there were other Christians on the board as well, where, you know, we would talk about, well, different kinds of subjects, and the majority wasn't there to, to pass it. So, it just depends. Yeah.
So when you get elected to a board, you basically are submitting to the vision that's already there?
Correct.
Best agreement?
Yeah. If you, if you didn't agree with, yeah.
Do you know what it is?
Yeah, all school districts have their, their vision statement on their website, or their mission statement. It's very obvious, and like I said, they all center around student achievement. So if that's not something that's really important to you, it may not be a good position to run for, or maybe, maybe there's a different position in the area that would be better suited for you. But if you're on a school board, it's all about kids, it's all about making them successful and meeting their needs. So that's the heartbeat of it.
Yes, but there are a lot of individual agendas going on in schools.
Sure.
So, and even if there's one or two people that want it, the rest of the ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent have to go along with it.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I think if you think about it, there's a lot going on.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, but-
So as a, as a member of the school board, you're saying that we couldn't go in and change any of that?
You, you cannot go on-
It's set, it's there in cement, and it never can be changed.
Well, as a school board, you can change the vision, if that's what you all, as, as a governing body decide to do, you can.
I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is that you have to pick your battles.
Yeah.
And you only want to fight battles that you have the ability- And you only want to fight battles that you have the ability to win.
Right, exactly. You have to be wise with your energy.
Fighting battles, exactly. You've got limited resources, limited energies as an individual. And you have to, you know, gain consensus, as you said.
Exactly.
To get some things done.
Exactly.
And, and if you're always known as the person who votes to know everything, you're probably not going to get support.
Exactly.
When it comes to something that's supportive.
Right, you really have to be a team player and, and you really hit the name on the hea, at the nail on the head. When you're a team player, um, and you have something that's very important to you, people will listen. If you're a constant negative source, um, and you feel passionately about something, and it may be something wonderful, it's going to be hard for people to listen if you don't have their respect. So gaining respect is a huge part of being on the school board.
I would think that student, defining student achievement would be a part of the vision.
Correct. Yes, defining student achievement. Right.
We might define it in terms of personal character.
Sure. Yeah, character is a big part of student achievement, absolutely. Exactly. Right. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. The, uh, the Texas Education Agency, and this I got off of the web. Uh, this is the framework for school board development. And basically, uh, and I'll just read a little bit to you, because it may help clarify. The Board of Trustees is the educational policymaking body for Texas public school districts. To effectively meet the challenges of public education, school boards and superintendents must function together as a leadership team. And we've emphasized that. But then they put together a framework for boards, and the first thing in that framework is vision. And the vision is to, uh, the board ensures creation of a shared vision that promotes enhanced student achievement. That's the whole purpose for a school district to begin with. It's student achievement. Schools were formed, uh, because parents wanted their kiddos to learn to read, to write, to do math. And back in the olden days, in fact, I was doing a, a history on, uh, of the schools in San Antonio, and I was surprised, back in seventeen eighty-nine, schoolmaster Don Jose Francisco de Lamata petitions the town council of San Antonio, of San Fernando de Bear for a stipend. He wanted to get paid for teaching. And then it goes into, and this was online too, and I just really enjoyed it. Uh, in eighteen eleven, they were, uh, getting, trying to get funds for a schoolhouse. But anyway, so you can see that the schools came up from the community, from the people in that community. And that's why school districts go to, like a large district like Northside or Northeast, they go to areas. Because we've grown so, it's so big. So, you know, if, if, um, I were in, uh, a school system that was really big, take Northside for example, and I lived, uh, oh, in the Dominion. Oh, I would not have the same understanding as someone who lived way out by SeaWorld. Because that's a different world. Or Halotas, or, I mean, because Northside, oh, great, is huge. And, uh, but anyway, that is one of the things, that's lunch, in case you're wondering. So I didn't want her to go away. Um, but in looking at the framework for school board development, and that's what Susan has emphasized, vision is very important. What do you want for the children in your area? And, uh, I think we all want the reading, writing, and arithmetic to be primary. And then look at the values from there. But everything on this framework, uh, the second one is a structure. The board provides guidance and direction for accomplishing the vision. Uh, then, uh, accountability. The board measures and communicates how well the vision is accomplished. The board promotes the vision. That's where the teamwork come in, comes in. The board works with the superintendent to lead the district towards the vision. And, um, the other thing to remember is that the board makes decisions as a whole only. At properly called meetings and recognizes that individuals, individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and campus administrative matters. Lot of board members don't know that. They go rushing off and start telling everybody what to do. And they have no authority, only at a specifically called meeting, um, and as a whole. So, okay.
Hopefully that answered some questions. Um, one of the other things that a school board does, it communicates a lot with the State Board of Education and with our legislators. So if there's a hot button item coming up that you, that you hear about at the state level, you, you need to call your representative, your senator, and make sure that they know how that particular issue is going to affect your school district. Um, we were north, at Northeast, and I'm sure they still are, just extremely vocal, um, with the state board and with legislators, letting them know, we really like this, push it through, or this is going to really be difficult for schools if you do this.
Do you speak to the legislature and state board as a body, or as an individual school board member can you call?
I always did it as an individual school board member. I called my representative, my senator, and let them know how this particular decision was going to affect, um, affect the school district. And also, I, I don't, I don't even know how many times I went to Washington DC as well, not on taxpayer money, to communicate even on a federal level, if you make these demands, this is how it's going to affect our school district. So, uh, it's really good to, um, be in constant communication with people who make decisions that affect the decisions you have to make. So that, that's part of, part of being on the board.
So you said that you paid for your own trip to go to Washington DC to speak on behalf of you as an individual, or you as the?
Actually, um, actually, no, I didn't pay totally for my own trip. There's different, um, organizations that train school board members, and part of the training is, um, being able to, to speak, like you talked about, being articulate, going to our legislators. And they would actually host a trip. So they would, um, they would fund a trip for school board members to talk to legislators about different, um, educational issues. Yeah.
I understand. Also, the state federal legislators or different entities.
Right. Right. Exactly, exactly. You, if you're talking about a state level issue, of course, you're going to talk to state level legislators. But if you're talking about a federal level issue, then, um, then you need to be talking to people in Washington.
What would be a federal issue and not a state issue?
Right.
So the curriculum is not state, but it's federal?
The common core is, is, I don't know that it's so much a curriculum as it is a requirement of certain standards that you have to meet across all states. And Anne might be able to speak better to that.
The state has to decide if they're going to accept it.
Yeah.
And so Texas does not do the common core.
Right. Texas does not do the common core.
California does. And I would hope our school system up to California and goes. Uh, but, uh, you know, the day may come where the federal government, uh, you do have to adopt them. It was like when the state started giving us all these curriculum requirements. And unfortunately, I can remember back when you didn't have to. But, uh, we were concerned like, we don't want, that's not what we want. But it really, the legislature, and that's why I said it's important to vote.
That if the, uh, state says you have to do this, you have to do it, or you lose your funding. And if you lose funding, then you don't have a school system. And so it's, you're kind of, you know, it's like, okay, we can do that. But there are ways, if you have creative administrators and a supportive school board, uh, to, to work around some things. Like, uh, when I was a principal and we had, uh, in the sixth grade, they were teaching, uh, the creation, you know, how the earth was formed. And the teacher came to me and said, I have a real problem with this. And I said, it's all theory. And so you emphasize theory. You don't have to say, this is the way it was done. You emphasize theory. And you can include the creation, as we believe, as part of that. But you need, you know, we don't believe it's theory, but there are people who, I mean, I don't want to get into evolution or the creation thing, but there are ways you can move around it. Uh, but you need creative administrators that, and that's why the, uh, relationship between the superintendent and the school board is very important. And that one of the worst things you can have is school board members going out and talking to, uh, are, are receiving phone calls, say, from teachers who are grumbling about their administrator, or they don't like this, or don't like that. You can have chaos in a hurry. And, uh, so the, the, you know, the standard reply, and that happened in the district, uh, that I went into. It was, in fact, it was in the newspaper, the chaos because of the miscommunication and the, the board members acting individually. Uh, and it took a really strong superintendent. He did a great job of turning it around and making sure the lines of communication were followed. But everybody, as a team, you agree to that as a board.
When the teachers have a problem with something, they go to their principal.
That's correct.
They should, principals should go to the superintendent and never to the board?
Okay. Well, if, uh, the teacher has a problem, or a parent has a problem with, say, the teacher, then that parent goes to the teacher. You go to the first person, kind of, you know, kind of like what the Bible teaches. You go to that person that you have the problem with. And then if your, uh, problem is not solved, and you're, say, you're a teacher, and the principal didn't solve your problem, then you let the principal know, and the principal, then you can take it to a higher level. But the communication is letting people know. Or the principal can say, I'll take that for you. Uh, or I'll present it to the superintendent and see if it's something that needs to be on the agenda, a school board agenda, or something we can just handle without taking it to a board.
Well, and, and the other, um, tool that a parent or a teacher, or any staff member can use is there is a grievance policy that every school district has. And one of, one of the responsibilities of a school board is to hear grievances. And so, uh, a parent or a teacher can file a grievance, and then it'll go, it'll go through several levels before it actually gets to the school board. So if it doesn't get resolved in a lower level, it will come before the school board. And as a, as a school board, you're a governing body, and so you listen to the grievance. You listen to the, the parent or teacher side of the grievance, and you listen to the district side of the grievance. And then you deliberate and you make a decision on whether you're going to grant the grievance to the griever or to the district. And so that's, I, I always enjoyed that part of the process because I enjoyed hearing from the public. I enjoyed listening to the different, um, viewpoints of a, of a certain situation. And then, um, the deliberating process and actually coming to a decision. So that's part of your job as a school board member. And if, if you're like me, I thought school boards met once a month. I was so dumb. Anyway, uh, nothing could be farther from the truth. You do have a called monthly meeting. But, um, we, in Northeast, we actually met, uh, every week, and sometimes even twice a week, depending on the issue. But it takes about ten to fifteen hours a week out of your time to be an effective school board member if you're not an officer. If you're an officer, it takes more time because you have more responsibility.
So clarification, both meetings are once a month?
The big public agenda meetings are once a month. Um, every meeting has to have a public agenda. So there may be something that comes up, uh, that you have to call an emergency meeting for a certain situation, or you're hearing a grievance, or.
That's for the public to call?
The, the public cannot come to a grievance. That's a pro, that's a closed meeting. So typically what would happen, you would have, the meeting's a closed meeting, the grievance is a closed meeting, but the, um, the answer to the grievance is a, is an open meeting. So the closed meeting part is all the deliberation and all the conversation and listening to both sides of the issue. And then the meeting is called into a public meeting, and if people are outside, they can come in and hear uh, what the, the conclusion is to the, to the grievance. So.
Most everything that has to do with people, personnel.
Yeah. Right.
Just to protect the privacy and everyone that we need to be.
Especially if it involves a student. So.
But there are rules. I mean, the, the notice of the meeting has to be posted twenty-four hours or forty?
Hmm, I think it's forty-eight.
Forty-eight. And then the, uh, agenda is printed?
The agenda's public. There is a notice. Um, so, yeah.
It will indicate, you know, the items on the agenda, and then usually towards the end, there's a closed session. And that's when personnel, students. So if there would be a member, and my neighbor comes over and says, oh, the school is doing this and that, this and that, I, I, what would I say to them?
I would refer them to the principal of the school. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I had, I had a lot of emails, um, of people complaining about different things in schools. And I would respond and say, well, did you, have you talked to your principal yet? And nine times out of ten, the answer was no. And I say, well, go to the principal, and then if, if it doesn't get resolved there, then let me know. And then if it didn't get resolved there, then I would make the superintendent aware of it, and then he would manage the process. Yeah. So. I'm sorry? The board hires a superintendent. That's your only employee. And they can fire him too. Or her. Him or her is in Anne's case. No, of course she didn't get fired. Absolutely not. All right. Um, we're going to go to the next slide. So the board focuses all of its actions on planning, policy development and approval, district-wide evalu- evaluation, and not on managing diff- district staff or schools. And that's that governance thing again. Where you're, you're making or approving policies that help student achievement or accomplish the vision, but you're not managing the schools. You manage the superintendent. That's it. So. Trustees adopt a budget that promotes sound business and fiscal practices and provides resources to achieve the vision. So when I first got on the Northeast Board, I met with, um, different, uh, areas of the school, the education, finance, um, well, I wanted to say finance because we're talking about. They gave me a notebook of the budget, and the notebook was about this thick. Yeah. So it, you know, it's a, was a five hundred million dollar budget. So there's lots of line items in all those budgets. And every school has a line item. I mean, every school has its own budget with its own line items, and all of that was in this giant notebook. And I just, finances is not my favorite thing. And I was a little overwhelmed, thinking, oh, my gosh, this is a big responsibility. And it is a big respons- And it is a big responsibility.
Or determines allocation.
Um, they approve the allocations, they don't determine them. So the people who are experts in finance are the ones that determine how the budget plays out, and school boards can say, "We don't like the way that you did the budgets, we think you need to do it differently." Or the budget doesn't focus on the school's vision, it's not providing resources for student achievement. So you can say those kinds of things, but school boards don't actually do the budget. You, you wouldn't be able to do anything else, you wouldn't be able to have a job or a family. Yeah, so the budget is proposed by the district.
The district, but the budget, no, they have staff.
Yeah, they have staff.
Different managers who handle the budget, and that was prepared.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, superintendent's staff, and then that, the budget would be pulled together, and then I'd meet with the, the business director, uh, and we would look at salaries, we'd look at how much it would raise, all of that, and then present it to the board.
Yes, sir.
And if the board said, "We don't like this, we want something changed," then we'll go back and board.
Do the, uh, principals submit their, their, uh, budget to the, uh, you know, district president people? You would think so.
Yes.
They do, they're, I mean, that's...
Because each school has its own budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there is, there's...
Yeah, but even before it gets to the principal, it starts with the teacher, because the teacher needs, I mean, they know what they want, and there's a process on each school or in each department, uh, and then that is pulled together, and then that's presented.
But then you have departments like transportation and a police department, and, you know, there's all these other components of making schools successful, um, that have a budget as well. So, I, I know when I, uh, when I ran, my platform was that I wasn't going to vote to raise taxes. And so when I got on the board, I was like, "Oh, gosh, all this costs so much." And, and the legislators were, um, sending down what we called unfunded mandates. So they would require, like, uh, you have to put seat belts on all the buses. Well, that's great, who wouldn't want to put seat belts on all the buses? But they wouldn't give you any money to do it. You know, and you have a thousand buses, you put thirty kids on each bus, you figure out how much that's going to cost. Well, the district didn't have that in its budget, because it came down during a legislative session that came in the middle of the year before we did the bud, I mean, after we had already approved a budget. And so, a lot of those things, the only way you can pay for it is through taxes. And, um, I remember, because I got on the board in May, and you approved the budget in June. So between May and June, I learned a whole lot about unfunded mandates and how much it really costs, uh, to give teachers a raise, and to help, um, just the district to run the way it needed to run. So when the, when the vote came, they were proposing, I think, a two-cent tax raise, I can't remember, two or three cents, it wasn't a lot. But I said I wouldn't vote for, to raise taxes. So when it came to my turn to vote, everybody had voted yes, and I was at the very end of the, the line of school board members, so it was my turn, and I said, um, I, I ran saying I wouldn't vote to raise taxes, so I'm, I'm voting no, but I want to, to tell, to publicly say that now that I have a better understanding of how things work, and what resources are needed to educate kids, I wish I could vote yes. But I'm not going to, because I want to keep my word to the public. So, of course, the raise got passed anyway, because it was just me voting no, but, um, but I was naive, and I didn't really understand, um, especially unfunded mandates, those can get quite expensive, and there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
You didn't say, "Read by this."
I did not. But I did, I did learn a whole lot, let me tell you, that is for sure.
You're sticking to your word, to the people you voted for.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's important to do that. If you make a promise, even if you find out you're wrong, you know, it's your decision how you want to handle that. But had I done more research and been smarter about it, I would have known a little more than I did when I got on the board, so...
I always believed you could add certain things to, things that have not produced well.
Right. Yes, sir.
Well, I was just going to add, that's it, and I mean, with five hundred million-dollar budgets, there's got to be some, some fat in there somewhere that you could, you could...
You would be surprised.
I would be.
Yeah.
No, you really wouldn't.
Education is way more to spend, I don't know. A lot of things that kids don't have. I would love a better structure, if you could talk about a computer city like this.
Well, I remember a few years ago, as an example, the, the, any, any ISD, I believe, uh, had spent six million dollars, as I recall, on a new press box at Comington Stadium. I, I would suggest that probably didn't add to student...
If, if they spent money on a press box, it, I'm sure it came out of, um, bond money and not, um, and not budget money.
It was declared in bond.
Yeah. Yeah, you, um, you don't build schools or do school improvement out of, uh, school budget. That's all bond money, which is separate.
Okay, and so if it's bond, it's approved by the people, and so...
Exactly.
Like, what people would produce?
Right. And you can be on a bond committee, which is a great way to get your feet wet in school district matters. Um, you can volunteer to be on a bond committee, and then you get to hear about all the needs within the school district, and you can help develop the, um, the line items on the bond. And like, if you think it's silly to pay six million dollars, you know, at a stadium, then you can, you can protest that in the bond meetings. And so it's a group of citizens that live within the district that decide what goes on the bond election.
It seems like every time we turn around, we're faced with a new bond.
Yeah.
How often, how often do bonds come up for a vote?
Well... I think we had three bonds when I was on, um, on the board for eight years.
Oh, wait.
Hmm-hmm.
Think about for a northside school district with their drastically growing population, and they have to add schools, they don't have any places for the kiddos. Are a billion portable buildings, not all of them.
It's...
But if it's, now, if it's a rapidly growing district, as North District is, then there is additional property taxes that are being collected constantly as well, so they've got growing pools...
But the property taxes, the property taxes may, may help pay for the education of the students in that area, but it is not going to build a school or buy the property. And so for years, um, people have gone to the legislators saying that there needed to be some sort of law, where if you're going to build a subdivision, that the, the subdivision owners should be responsible to, to donate a lot, or to sell at a reduced price, sell a space for a school. But that law has never, has never passed. And as you know, property is expensive, and it takes a lot of acres, especially if you're looking at a high school, um, or even a middle school, because there's football, there's a football practice area and track and all that, yeah.
Yes, I want to ask, does the school, do the school districts or the school board pay superintendents exit bonuses? Are there exit bonuses that are...
Uh, not that I know of.
And I, I, I always...
Exit, like, if they've been fired, or...
Yeah, you know, uh, I mean, you know, you hear how some people got fired, they're not doing their job, but yet they leave with, you know...
It's, whatever's in their contract, which is public, um...
And where would that money come from, the budget or from the...
It's from the budget, yeah. Bond, bond is only about school buildings, facilities, property improvements. Bonds don't, don't educate kids, it provides the structure to educate kids.
One thing people don't really realize is like, if a developer gives the school district or sells them a plot of land for a school, uh, this was, came up in a superintendent's meeting at Region Twenty-One, and they said, "And the su, the school district had to build a road..."
Right.
"...for the buses to be able to get..."
Exactly. Not only do you have to...
The general public is really not aware, you just think the city comes in and goes...
No, the school district has to build the road to the schools, you have to pay for the stoplight, if you want a stoplight there, um, so you can let your parents and school buses out. District pays for all of that. It's crazy, yes.
I just want to hopefully, I, who can serve on a bond committee?
Anybody, anybody that lives in the district can serve on the bond committee. So you can, um, you can call the district or look on the website and see if there is, is a bond coming up, and say that you would like to be, um, considered to be on the bond committee. You could also, uh, contact the board member in your area, um, let them know that you're interested. But that, that's just a great way to get to know, um, what goes on in a school district. The other thing that I would say just is critical is attend board meetings. That once a month, big board meeting, go to that, start this month. You know, go every meeting that you can go to, because you'll learn a whole lot.
Well, that's what I was asking before, are they public meetings?
Yes. Yeah, I was talking about the grievances or not, but the, the big school board meeting, the monthly meeting is public. Yes.
So you'd find out about that by going to their website?
Hmm-hmm. It's usually the, the first Tuesday of every month, or the third Wednesday of every month, whatever, it's a consistent, it's a consistent meeting. Yeah, it's a great, and the agenda is public, it has to be posted, it's typically several hundred pages long. Yeah, so, yeah, so, so when you're a school board member and you get the agenda two days before the school board meeting, and it's several hundred pages long, and as a good school board member, you want to know what's on the agenda, right? So it takes time to go through that agenda, and it's a big commitment, it's a big commitment.
Do the board members have assistance?
No. Nope. Nope.
Would they have real assistance? Would they have someone who freely, yeah, really does?
I guess you could, if you personally wanted to have a volunteer to help you, I, I don't know, I, I don't know anyone who's done that, yeah.
They get assistance, you know, like, when you ran, you had people that helped you get out signs or do things like that.
Yeah, I had volunteers to help me with my campaign, but once you get on the board, no, there's, um, there's a stipend, like, if you, uh, if you went to a mandatory training in Austin, you can turn in your mileage and get, um, and get money back for that. But this is a volunteer position, and it's, it takes, like I said, a lot of time.
Of course, there's privacy, you know, but also, you know, there's certain things that cannot be disclosed until whenever, and you have to be cautious in how to...
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of confidential information as a school board member that you receive, and that's where that integrity comes in, that y'all were talking about. Um, there's, there's really difficult situations that the public never hears about, uh, maybe a student commits suicide, and there's, you know, the school's turned upside down, it's against the law to, uh, for the media to publicize a suicide under eighteen. So, um, things like that would happen. Um, a student would, you know, not from school, but maybe just run away from home, and it just caused an upheaval in the school, because they're loved, and there's just, there's just a lot of things that happen, um, that you become aware of. And for me, my prayer life went through the roof when I got on the school board, because your phone goes off probably seven, eight, ten times a day, at least, it, mine did, with situations that came up that really needed prayer. And for me, that's where I felt like I made a difference, is because I knew God heard me when I prayed, and the other members too, who prayed. And there's, you get in some really difficult situations that only God can give you wisdom on how to, how to get through it. So whether outwardly, I really made a huge difference, I don't know, but I know where I stood, and I know the position that God put me in numerous times, where I got to get on my knees and really pray for things that were really, really tough, really tough. So, it's more, it's a public office, but it's, it's, it's the behind-the-scenes things where you really make a difference, so... Um, all right, where was I? Next slide. Is that it? I am on accountability, right? Yes. So, boards are accountable to the public, really, the public is your boss. When you get elected, you get elected by the public, and they're the ones that you answer to. And if they don't like the way you did your job, they won't vote for you again, so that's where your accountability lies personally. But you're also accountable for the achievement of the district, for the student achievement, because basically it all falls on the policies that you approve or don't approve. So you're accountable to, um, the whole district, and, um, and that accountability comes through how you feel about the different proposals that are put before you, the different policies, different ways that the district handles situations, and of course, student achievement. Let's see, we talked about this a little earlier, but board members, you have to ensure a way for the public to get ahold of you. So this is, this was a surprise to me. I get on the school board, and you have, you have to give them a phone number. It's public, uh, it's a requirement for a pub, a person who holds a public office. Well, I didn't have enough money to have two cellphones, so I only have one cellphone, so my, that, the number for the public to get ahold of me was my cellphone. Yeah. So that, or, or the district email address. So, um, I had a lot of phone calls during my, during the day at work from people in the district who were upset about something, or wanted an answer to something, and, um, it's a, it's a lot. It's fun, I loved it, but thankfully, I had a job that I could be very flexible in, so if it, if I took an hour on the phone with somebody, I just worked an hour later, kind of thing.
Okay, so maybe this is what's really not clicking, I think? If board is accountable to the community, and the community calls you...
Right.
Why would they call you if they have a problem and not the...
Well, they, they could call me, and I would refer them to the principal if they hadn't talked to the principal, if it's a parent. But sometimes a, a community member would call and say, "Hey, there's a school bus that keeps driving on the edge of my property every time it makes a turn." I mean, you know, it, it, it can be somebody who's not involved in the schools in any way, or somebody calling to complain that taxes got raised and they don't understand why, or somebody calling saying they don't want this on the bond, they want this on the bond.
Just a voice, you don't do anything about it.
Right, I, you can listen, and you can direct them to the right people who may have more information, um, that will help them. So...
Tiffany, that, that's the most important thing, to direct them, because for you to answer, because you're, you're not...
You're not the expert.
...have the authority to even respond, uh, because the board is only a board when it's in session.
Hmm-hmm.
Uh, and so basically what you're doing is being, it, it's being a really nice person and referring them to the right source.
Right. In, in Northeast, at least when I was there...
That, that's great.
That, the, the board president would answer all the general emails, like, some, people would just send an email to the board, to the whole board, not just an individual member. And so the board president would be responsible for answering those emails, and typically it would be something like, "I appreciate your concern," which I do, um, "But so-and-so in this department will have a much better answer for you than I would," and I would forward that email to the right person.
Were their emails controlled?
Were they controlled? No. No.
If somebody called or emailed you concerning a complaint-
Uh-huh.
Did you have to notify the president or?
No, not unless it was something that we thought the president of the board needed to know about, if it was like a really big issue, yeah.
So if you were to get enough complaints in your area, you're maybe about something, you could go to the leader of the president of the board and you could say, we really need to discuss-
Yeah, yeah, we have a, I want to put this as an agenda item or I'd like to have a public discussion about this, something like that, yeah. Yeah, you can absolutely do that.
Now you are probably beginning to get a good idea as to why the state requires so much training for a school board member.
Yes ma'am, sorry. Did you have a question?
Yes, did you say that we could have a, a separate email and a separate phone number for the public as opposed to our personal?
You can have, if you, if you have another phone number that you would like to use for the public, you can give that phone number. I didn't, we didn't even have a landline, I just had my cellphone, that was it. But the district provides an email for you.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's how a lot of communication's done.
If you have an email, do you need a phone number?
Um, it's a requirement. Uh-huh, you have to be, you have to give a phone number, yep. Because not, not everybody emails, um, there's some elderly that probably don't even have a computer, but you, you have to be accessible to the public, so. Yep. No, thankfully. Nope. When I got off, they took all my information down, so, off the website, so there wasn't a way to get ahold of me. Eight.
She's a saint.
I loved it. Okay, um, this is an important one as well. Trustees annually evaluate their own performance and its ability to work with the superintendent as a team. And so what we did as a board is we had an assessment tool that every year we would evaluate ourselves. How well are we communicating with the public? How well did we work as a team with our superintendent? Um, all those things were really important. Um, in fact, the last year I was on the board, we were nominated for school board of the year and one of the reasons we were nominated was because of our assessment tool, that we took it seriously when we, and we would, we would evaluate it individually and anonymously and then the board, um, the superintendent sec, secretary would tally up all the marks and, and this, the board president, which was me at the time, had to go through that with the board and say, okay, these are the areas we're really strong in, these are the areas we really need to work on. And so it wa, it was a really good tool, um, and I, I don't know a lot of boards that do that, but it is a requirement, so. If you get on a board and they don't have an assessment tool, that's something that you can definitely recommend. Okay. I think we are on the very last one, let me run through it, what time is it, am I off? Okay, okay, okay. So the board ensures that its members understand and respect the need to function as a team with the, with the superintendent to achieve the best educational results for the students. And we've kind of hammered that, um, a lot, but that's because it's, it's an area that gets easily confused. Um, can, building consensus and working together as a team is, is so important and not all boards do this, but we would, um, we would deliberate an issue, um, in, in private in closed session and then if we disagreed, we would talk it out, figure, figure it out and when we went out to vote, most of the time we, we stuck together as a team and voted unanimously. It didn't always work that way if you felt really strong about an issue, but, um, issues like, uh, staff and student issues that can't be discussed in public or discussed in closed session. And in that time, you get a lot of details and you deliberate about the situation and how best to handle it. Um, each district has an attorney, the attorney, at least for us, was always in on those meetings because a lot of decisions we had to make had to do with school law and we needed to make sure that we were following all the policies and procedures and, um, and so the attorney was really helpful in those matters because we weren't attorneys and even if we were, we might not have been education attorneys or we understand all of that part of, of law. So, um, so those, those times are really important to build consensus and decide as a board, how are we going to handle this situation and then go, um, and, and then go vote as a team. Um, if we didn't vote as a team and there was a couple of members who felt very strongly about something and voted against it or for it when everybody else didn't, we still supported the decision. So even if I voted against the tax raise, um, I still supported the district in the process because I'm on a team, right? So.
You might, uh, mentioned the, that team and working with the superintendent. That is why the average, there's a lifespan, but the span, the time that a superintendent serves, it used to be two and a half years and I think it's even less now. Because especially in your larger systems, it's more higher and higher. And if, you know, the superintendent is not doing what, are fulfilling the agreement in their contract or the vision for the district, I mean-
Are there contracts for a year, two years, five years?
It, uh-
It depends.
There are probationary contracts, there's contracts for three years, five years.
It depends. If, if you get- If you're, if you get onto a school board and you start your training, the number one thing that you'll hear over and over and over again is the school board's most important responsibility is to get the right superintendent and keep him or her. That is the most important responsibility because the superintendent oversees, you know, thousands of employees and students. They can serve, I think Richard was on the board twenty something, I mean, uh, superintendent twenty something years. Yeah.
But, uh, you know, the superintendent can leave if they want to, but they do have a contract.
Yeah.
You know, like when, uh, when I resigned from the board and decided to retire because I really felt the Lord had called me to go in another direction, I'd just gotten a five year contract, another five year. And so I could have stayed another five years, but, you know, when you feel like, when you know that the Lord has called you to go in another direction, to go into ministry, then it's like, you know, it's best to do what you want to do.
You mentioned when you start your training, you're not talking about this training, you're talking about something, there's groups and-
There's lots of training, um, that you have to do every year. The first year is the most hours, I can't remember how many it is, do you remember?
But it's a lot.
Who trained for that training?
Um, uh-huh, uh-huh. Yeah.
They, they work with the Texas Education Agency and then the Education Service Center and, uh, our schools in Fair County and surrounding counties, that's region twenty.
Yeah.
They, there's, uh-
I, I ha, I literally had hundreds of hours of training. Um, I, I don't remember what the requirement is, that first year, it might only be twenty-five or thirty, I'm not sure, but it, there is a requirement and there is a board meeting, um, during the year or every year, there is a board meeting where, uh, the su, the board president has to say whether board members have met their training hours or not met their training hours. So you're held responsible for those.
Yeah, and then once you get through all of that initial training, there's annual-
Oh yeah, every year. Go ahead.
Is it a four year or two year term?
Four.
Any other costs besides the campaign thing? Again, is there any other?
No, other than like gas to the board meetings, um, no, not, not really. Yeah. You're looking at at least ten hours a week. When I was board president, it was more like twenty, yeah. Because you have to attend a lot, not just meetings, but you go to events like football games and PTA meetings and, um, school opens a new wing or has a new art classroom and they want a board member to say some words or teacher appreciation or a principal's birthday, um, it, there, there's just all kinds of opportunities to participate, um, in different events. And if you don't show up to anything, to me, you're not representing the community as well.
So I think a lot of us, you know, we see a lot of negative news about what's going on in our schools and so we might have this impression of, man, all these bureaucrats and people out there, what you all do, what you all are doing, but they're all lost, they're crazy people and stuff. Can you give us an idea, having served on the boards and in superintendentship, can you give us an idea of these team members that you served with? Are there good folks that go on?
They're great folks.
Are there weirdo raffle down there?
At least, Anne may, Anne may have had a more varied experience. Um, when I got on the board, I was the first new board member in ten years and I was the only one that was new. Northeast. Um, Northeast school board members stay a long time, in fact, one just retired or two that have been on their, um, twenty-three and twenty-six years, I believe. So, um, the tenure is, is really long, but it's, it's a well-established, um, board with really good relationships with each other and the community. I, I went, honestly, I went in with my guns blazing, I was going to, you know, change this or do that and I was so humbled and overwhelmed by the commitment of the people I was on the board with, by their genuine love for the students. Um, no individual agendas, people were there and they were serious about it and they wanted to make a difference. And I learned more in those eight years in my life than I've learned in college or anywhere else. It was a phenomenal experience and a real honor to be able to do that. That's not the case on every board, but it was in my case. I, I think Anne, Anne's had some different interesting experiences that she could tell you, but-
Well, we've had all kinds, but, uh, problems come into play when a board member is power-seeking and wants to be well-known, so they raise Cain and Abner. So that, it's, because it's all about them. And when they learn to be a team player, it's when things really get done for kids.
Yep, exactly.
You know, but if someone goes on the board because they want to fire the superintendent, that, that's not a good reason to be a board member. That may be something that needs to be done, I'm not saying that, but you should go on to the board because you're willing to make a commitment to the children and their education within your community.
Right.
Uh, and people do make a difference, there's no doubt about it, but I think it's important, as Susan was saying, when you get on the board to, uh, to just learn and just understand the dynamics involved and all and that, yes, there's a lot of laws, there's a lot of procedure and, and just having respect for that, but, uh, uh, the training usually helps. But yeah, I've had some real interesting experiences, but usually other board members took care of them, you know?
Yeah.
So because they were supportive or the person had the wrong idea about how to work in a team or wanted to have that power and control, that's usually what.
Yeah.
You know, and there's plenty of power and control that go around. And, and that was another reason for us wanting to do the training because, uh, you know, the power and control within you, if you feel really called, that's going to work through you and you're going to be the hands and feet of Jesus. And so I cannot even imagine Jesus pounding on a table except in the temple when they himself. But, uh-
What's school history for you guys?
I was at Fort San Houston with the military and that is, and everybody thinks that's the Department of Defense, the United Texas Public School. So we had to follow the same rules and procedures as anybody else, all the curriculum, plus we had the federal staff and the military.
Right.
And it, it was wonderful, but, uh, there again, the, the board members were not voted, they were appointed by the commander. And they went through an interviewing process. And I mean, it was a totally, as far as getting on the school board. And so the commander, you know, my relationship with the commander was very important too because yes, there were some people that wanted to be on the board but had no business being on the board.
Right.
So it, there's challenges no matter where you are and that's the, the reason why prayer is vital and teamwork. And I was amazed of the number of Christians-
Yep.
-that are on school boards-
Yep.
-that are teaching in public schools that get battered all the time.
God's people are everywhere.
Yes.
They're everywhere and-
Do you get battered?
Well, I mean, they, uh, let's say-
Persecuted?
Persecuted might be a better word.
And do you, as, as school board member, have a way to protect them or help them, defend them, or is that not inferred to your experience?
Well, it depends on, yes, there would be ways that I guess that you could protect them, but not, uh, I mean, you can protect them from nasty phone call, but if someone threatens you-
Yeah.
-with your life, then yes, there are things you can do. But, uh, you know, I, I had some teachers that were threatened by a parent, he came in and tried to threaten me and he was not the one in the military, so I turned and talked only to the wife. And he pounded the table and said, I'm here too. And I looked at him and I said, sir, I will not even give you eye contact again until your behavior improves. Your wife is the one that's in the military and if you don't behave, you can be thrown off this installation. And I said, so until you sit there and you're quiet and listen, you are not here.
And Anne brings up a good point because threats are, are real and we, I, we experienced that as a board, we experienced it as an individual and, um, it's part sadly of our world right now if you don't do what something, somebody wants you to do.
Right, and I think it's given to others.
Uh-huh.
The, the five, you know, when, when we were kids growing up, um, I can speak for my generation, I can't remember where everybody is from, but make, make it Charlie. To have a diverse, uh, community, it was, you know, what denomination were you? Were you Christian or Jewish? And that was about it and I grew up in the Jewish community, but I mean, the, the diversity was if you were Methodist, Baptist, Presbyterian, Presbyterian. But now the diversity is, um, I mean, it's a time for Christians to unite across those denominational lines because there are atheists that, I mean, Melinda Murray was alive as well, she hadn't been out of work until later, but now we have a lot of people, a lot of atheists out there of, in all different, different places.
Yeah.
And I think-
It's a different world.
It's so different and, uh, and people right now are really angry.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and so you just hope that anger doesn't come out at school board, but if their child fails a test, it's going to come out.
But then those issues are primarily personnel issues again that the superintendent would deal with or principals would deal with, not the school board membership?
Well, it would only get to the school board when it cannot be solved, when it's not solved, to the satisfaction of the-
Yes, sir.
In order to run for a board membership, do you have to go through all the certification and talk about first?
No, you, no. You, you don't go through the training, the required training unless you get elected.
So you could have people running for this position and have no idea? Ouch.
That was me. I ran for the position and I knew absolutely nothing, other than God had told me to do it, that's all I knew. I won by four votes, that was it.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the reason for this session.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I am...
So you're building it?
So you don't, you're not in the situation I was in where I just was blindsided because I didn't do my homework and I didn't attend enough board meetings to really learn what was going on. Um, so I, I was on a really sharp learning curve. It took about two years to really understand how things work.
And that's when my decision to four phases.
Yeah.
So this was just a general overview, the next session, and I'll go through that later, but that's why it's dangerous because...
'Cause after this, you may decide, "This isn't for me," or you may say, "I can't wait till the next session," you know? So...
It's a lot like, if Buckner Fanning said years ago about being a Baptist preacher, he said, "In a Baptist church, anybody can become a pastor, even a rent attendant." And he says, "Some have chosen." And that's what happened in school boards. There have been some people that, and in that earlier one, he said, "If you have their personal agenda, you're gonna have difficulty."
Right.
Because...
You're not there for yourself. You're there because God called you and you're there to serve the public. That's why you're called a public servant.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that you don't have some ideas about how things should be.
Right.
You know, like if you want to see more of this or more of that, or, or some changes here or there, it just means you don't run on that one thing.
Yep.
Jesus had lunch with prostitutes in his sentence, and it was a religious thing.
Yep. All right, well, I think it's lunchtime.
Yeah, has anybody...
We're gonna be looking at worldview. And uh, I know immediately that, that takes in an awful lot of, of thought and information. If you'll look at your handout that you have, uh, time for lunch is up at the top and let's discuss worldview. I'd like for you to take your green cards that you have and at the bottom, there are eight questions to determine worldview. At the bottom of the page, right down here, there are eight questions. And you'll see them here behind me. And we'd like you to answer equal, if you may just number one to eight, and then I'd like you to answer each of, each of those eight questions before we move on.
Yes, the green card?
Yes. On the green card?
On the back.
On the back, number one to eight, and then answer each of those, do absolute morals exist. So... Try not to get chocolate chip cookies.
No, that's...
Leave. Oh, well.
Leave space because we're gonna use the back to write about the new score.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they were gonna write on the sheet. But wait up, there's, there's more green.
There's more green cards.
There are. But... This is too easy with all the answers being yes.
It's like the old boy at Sunday school, the teacher said, "Okay, children, what is right, right?" And there's big, pretty tape. He'd say, "Well, I know at a Sunday school, my answer is always supposed to be Jesus, but that sounds like a scoundrel." So, you know, put, put, put somebody's on the carpet. Let's look at these. Number one, do absolute morals exist?
Yes.
How many of you say yes? Well, we're not, we're not... But think about, yes, do they exist? Is absolute truth defined in the Bible? Did Jesus live a sinless life? Is God the all-powerful and all-knowing creator of the universe and does he still... Oh, I'm sorry. Does he still rule today? Susan, you didn't tell me to get behind the mic, so...
Sorry.
Somebody's gotta take care of him. Number five, is salvation a gift of God that cannot be earned? Is Satan real? Does a Christian have a responsibility to share his or her faith with others? Is the Bible accurate in its teachings? Now, turn the page and look at the top box of the next page. Barna Research were the ones that asked these questions. According to Barna Research, only nine percent of all born-again believers answered yes to all eight questions. Nine percent.
What?
Less than ten percent. You would, you would question, you would question that. When we look at worldview, we look at a lot of ideology within that, in that we may think something, but whether we believe it is different. There's a difference between knowledge and wisdom. Wisdom is putting knowledge into effect. Jesus was never called a preacher. He was called a teacher. And whenever we get to serving and dealing with school boards, we have to think about worldview. What is it that we really believe? What is it that we really know for sure? Said that people that answered or got all or got one of these eight incorrect weren't really believers. Some may disagree with that, but we live in a world where mediocrity is okay, where it's okay to be lukewarm. But God spoke to that through Christ, and what did he say about lukewarmness?
Spit you out.
Spit you, spit you out of my mouth. Uh, Anne and I were talking earlier and there's only two times in scripture that I can remember when Jesus used, or when the word spit was used. You remember the other time?
He healed someone.
When he healed the blind man. He spat, put his on his... But there's not a good connotation here. And as we venture into secularism, which almost school boards are, in that they're not religious institutions, we have to deal with what is it that we really believe? What are we convicted of? More than once, you heard Susan and Anne mention this morning, to be called. Maybe just in some feedback here, what does it mean to be called?
To have insurance, that's where you're supposed to be because you've got impressed upon you somehow.
A desire, a yearning, okay? God impressed upon you. How many of you have ever heard God talk to you? A few. How many of you have ever felt God talk to you? There's a difference, isn't there? There are some, and I, when I was pastoring to go and to visit somebody in a hospital and probably Harold maybe during chaplaincy programs, but I sat and talked to a lady one time who said, "Be careful, Charlie, don't sit at the end of the bed because you'll sit on my angel." And I, like you, looked and didn't see anyone. But you know, to her and probably to God, there was an angel sitting at the end of that bed. As we look at conviction and if we look at morals and where we want to take this, we've got to understand that school boards are going to be a parallel many times to society. What we see on a socia, on a school board is what society is doing. How many of you live in a community where everybody's a Christian? Why isn't everyone a Christian? Difficult, these callings. You know, there's a lot to calling. What is the first thing that God wants us to do? And as you look at serving on a school board or maybe teaching a Sunday school class, whatever it may, what is God's first pronouncement that we need to do? He says we need to seek. Remember, he says, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and then all of these things will be added to you." When I was pastoring, people would be converted, God would talk to them, their lives would change, and the first thing they might wanna do is teach a Sunday school class. While God is saying to you, as you look at this endeavor of serving on a school board, the first step is not serving, the first step is seeking. And the conviction that God has you in the right place. Now, if you're waiting for a letter, it's not gonna come, you know? "Dear Joe, uh, I think this is where you need to be, love God," you know? It's not gonna happen. What is a definition of a worldview? As we looked at these eight questions, we saw difficulty in answering some of those for ninety percent of born-again believers, they say. Down in the middle section, it says, "It's any ideology, philosophy, theology, movement, or religion that provides an overarching approach to understanding God, the world and man's relations to God and the world." Worldview. Where do you fit into God's plan? But there's a difference because many people, the majority of people, don't believe that God has a plan for their lives. Jeremiah 29:11, can anybody recite that? God got a plan for us. You know, he and I talked about that when I was young. My plan that I was gonna be six foot four and have a full head of hair and be able to dunk a basketball. And I read Jeremiah 29:11 and I found out that it was God that had a plan for me. Not me had a plan for me. But there's another, someone with a biblical worldview, a biblical worldview, believes his primary reason for existence is to love and serve God. Do you believe that? You know? What does it take to establish these worldviews in your life? Are you the Christian that God wants you to be? Have you achieved the height of Christendom in his world? "Oh, Lord, thank goodness, I'm finally where you want me to be." Now, that does sound like a Baptist, doesn't it? You know? I, I grew up in a Methodist church and I had a Baptist aunt and uh, I can remember her talking to me about Jacob's ladder. And I knew that all the Baptists were on the top run, ready to get into heaven and, and us poor Methodists were way down here on the bottom. When do we attain the fulfillment of what God has planned for us? When are you gonna be there? Huh? When are you gonna be what God wants you to be, perfect, when you're home with him? "In my father's house, there are many mansions and I've gone to prepare a place for you." The carpenter that worked with his father Joseph or his earthly father Joseph is the same carpenter that prepares a place for us. And we take on holiness within that because we are like him. In worldview, you and I have to establish within our own hearts and minds and souls a commitment to make to deal with what we're gonna deal with. I have gotten to a point where I'm sick and tired of watching the news. Now, I may be the only one, but I doubt it. But everything is so negative. What is it in our worldview that can change that? Jesus can change that. You know, I don't know what he'll do. I don't know what tomorrow holds, but he does. It's the old, "I don't know what tomorrow's future holds, but I do know who holds the future." And as you've come about being convicted to serve on a school board, you are gonna look at lives that you can help change through your relationship with Christ. You're not gonna have a banner issue. I don't think Susan got a banner issued to her that said, "Charge." I thought you... But you learned Will Crick, you know, because one of the things that we know about Christ is that he was compassionate, but we also know that he was humble. Humble. I've known a lot of Baptist preachers that have a hard time being humble. I know a lot of people that have a hard time being humble. I helped a lady twenty years ago, maybe more, run for a school board office in a district. And this morning, when Susan was talking about having your own hidden agenda, I had spent hours trying to help her get elected until I finally realized that her agenda was not about those kids. Her agenda was about what she wanted. Is there a difference between wants and needs? Have you got everything you want? No. Do you have everything you need? Yes. Look at the sparrows. I walked out into the parking lot and I didn't see many sparrows this morning, but he says, "Just as the lilies of the field are clothed, our worldview is dependent upon that relationship." So... So let's do a practical exercise. Let's take worldview from theory into real life. And I'd like for you to think about in the last three weeks or four weeks, decisions that you have made, personal decisions that you've made, that you have made them out of, thank you, out of a worldview, okay? Your worldview. So think about a decision that you have made in the last several weeks that you had to employ your worldview in order to make that decision. Would someone like to share? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Just today, I don't know if God is calling me to be on the school board or not. But I've had an inkling in my heart for several years, like, just hearing, "School board, school board." And then when this training opened up, I'm like, okay. I didn't sign up for it until maybe last week. Because I really don't want to be on the school board. But if God is calling me to it, then I will do it.
Okay.
And so I came this morning with that dread in my heart.
With that dread in my heart. Did you hear that? With that dread, that fearful reality that I may be being called by God to do something that I do not want to do. Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am. A decision you've made.
I already think Carol, a family member who has a lot of issues, and to the point that it crossed my mind, should I actually help this individual? And I said to myself, of course, I can make a difference if I, with the Lord, open the door, and I will go to him to do the best for this individual, and that's, and I'm willing to do it.
Okay. Now, what part of your worldview led you to make that decision?
God's principles. God's principles, to love, and to forgive, and to support, and express his love, show his love through the Lord, let us be the light of the world.
Okay. All right. Someone else. What decision have you made in the last several weeks that employs your worldview? Yeah, say it.
So I planned a twenty-year reunion, high school reunion, over the last couple of months. And you have to pick the events for the weekend. And I know most of my classmates probably, you know, alcohol would be a very important part of the event. One of the events was the happy hour at a local bar. And I thought, okay, well, those folks, that's their event. But for the formal principal event, dinner event, I didn't want any food alcohol. I didn't want it to get out of hand, I didn't want, I didn't want it to get out of hand. And then a church service, you know. I went to Catholic school, so it's like, well, maybe some of them still go to church. You know, let's have a reunion location they go to church at. And I plugged it, and after Saturday dinner, I plugged it. Nobody came, you know, nobody went to the church. It was just me and my wife and a teacher of mine, and out of all of the people, no one went to the church. But I plugged it, and I saw a lot of heads nod, and I was like, okay. You know, some of them were thinking, that's a good idea, that's the right idea. Even if they didn't go, it still kind of registered on some level. But just on picking the events, I had to use my position as the committee, as the planner.
As a Christian.
As a Christian planner, to determine alcohol or no alcohol, church or no church, plug the church or don't plug it, and all those little things.
Good, good, good. How did the alcohol not know alcohol? Did that turn out positively?
Well, yeah, the dinner was mellow. At the very end, the last two, three days, I said, okay, if some people want to bring it from the bottom of the line, that's fine. I could be byOB, very little, nobody got out of hand. I think because I waited until the last minute, and then gave people the opportunity to just rev up and find about it. And at the happy hour, it was a different crowd, but they didn't get out of hand either. They surprised me, I think, you know. When you're with, maybe you made a church or something like that.
Good, good, good. Yeah, it's surprising what happens in twenty years, isn't it? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add that, the point I was trying to make is that I've been taking care of this individual for twelve years, where everybody else gave up on him.
Okay.
They had nothing to do with him, they were tired, they were tired, he's never gonna change, that type of thing. And I stuck it out for twelve years, and I'm still going strong. Regardless of these, sometimes getting mad at me, persecute me, stop talking to me, I leave them alone, and they start coming all by themselves.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Another, somebody else. Testify to a decision that you've made in your personal life out of a worldview perspective. Yes, sir.
I just qualified for that, but recent special election, two candidates, and one I was familiar with from years back, you know, and so it wasn't favorable. The other one I knew nothing about. And so really, basically, when it was all said and done, I relied on my political part.
Okay.
This is what I believe, so I don't know what that calls.
Okay, all right. Someone else.
You thinking about the last three years?
Yeah.
No.
Pardon me? No, I was just getting this question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just giving you a timeframe, just a recent decision. Someone over on this side. Yes, sir.
Well, I made a choice to come here today for that reason. I'm supposed to, if this wouldn't be understanding, I knew nothing about this whole procedure. But I feel like we have a responsibility to do work, but not other. So, and I had another option, two other options.
Well, one of them wasn't playing golf. Okay, so don't throw that on the table.
And they were good options, one was staying on, and the other.
Which is periodically a good option.
It was a good option. The other one was a mentorship breakfast that we had, which I had to turn down. But I'm glad I came to this, it's quite a choice. Because God wants us to know, he wants us to know on his work. And he's a master designer, and he has divine order. We're not gonna fit into it if we don't get knowledge, get understanding of this.
Okay. Someone else. What have you decided recently, based upon your worldview? Anyone? All right.
I got one more, if you want me to say it.
Okay, one more.
So I don't know if I'm the only Catholic in the room, I'm getting that feeling in my ear. So one of my Catholic friends got engaged, remarried, and they're not having a Catholic wedding. And she should know better, because she was studying in Vietnam just last year. So she knows the Catholic teaching of sacramental marriage. She's not getting one. I had to decide whether we're going to that wedding or not. And she's a good friend of mine. It was a very hard decision to make not to go, because we both, we both know what the teaching is on sacramental marriage. And if I go, I felt like I would be giving witness to a scandalous marriage, scandalous relationship.
Okay.
Saying out of God's order. On the whole country, somewhere on that hard, you know. No, civil marriage. It's a hard decision to make, and I figure something, anyway, that was.
But it's a perfect example of someone making a decision based upon a worldview. Yeah, okay, yeah, it certainly is. Well, let's look at a couple of these worldviews. What are some various worldviews that are present in the world? When you go to work with a school board, there are going to be multiple worldviews that you're gonna come up against. So let's look at a couple of these, seven or eight, and see what they're like. Charlie, lead us in the discussion of that. And I believe we have some paper that needs to be.
She'll take out the... In your box, whoever is the controller of the box at your table. Oh, we're passing them out, so never mind.
They are official, they just didn't make it to the box.
I received a... I received an email yesterday that someone had, was talking about an airline. And the airline had a full capacity of people on the plane. And there was a gentleman that came up, and he saw a lady sitting there, and she was reading her Bible. And he said, "Did any of you see this?" I don't know where it came, I don't do Facebook, I don't let anybody see my face unless they have to. But anyway, he came up, saw the lady there, and she was reading her Bible. And he told the stewardess, he said, "I am not gonna sit in this seat." And he said, "She is crossing over my comfort zone here." Well, so the stewardess went to the captain and talked to him, came back and said, "Well, we don't do this normally, but we're gonna move you to the first class." And she looked down, she told someone, "Listen, just wait." So anyway, she said, "We're gonna move you to first class, and you don't have to sit here." And people around in the plane were listening to all of this. And she took the lady reading her Bible, and she said, "Come with me, I want you to go to first class." And that's exactly what they did in the plane. That's a worldview. That's a view of seeing something occur that is determined by what you think. Now, let me tell you what. You being Catholic, you're still gonna get to heaven, you know that, don't you? Okay. Now, I tell you what, I think the Catholics may be above the Baptists too on that run, but... Where was I going with this?
I was going to the chart.
That's right. Look at the chart. Here you will see sixty different entities that were produced on Internet by Summit Ministries. If you look to the left, you'll see a theology, philosophy, ethics, biology, psychology, sociology, law, politics, economics, and history. And then if you go across the top, you'll see the worldviews of each of these items. Secularism. Can somebody tell me what secularism is?
Of this world and not of the Catholic world.
Okay, it's like he said, "We're to be in it, but not of it." How about Marxism? Do any of you remember being a Marxist or knowing Marxist? You know, this young lady doesn't even know who Marx was, but you thought he was one that had the four, three brothers and had a Grotto? Exactly. Share and share alike except for. Anyway, you'll see under theology that secularism and Marxism are both atheistic, meaning no belief in God. Atheism, meaning against. Postmodernism. Whoa, Nellie. Post means what? After. After being modern. It's going back and starting over. Postmodernism, theology, suspicion. Pantheism, do you remember pantheism? Remember? Pan? Huh? Everything, you know, many gods, pantheists. Under new spirituality. Islam, monotheism. Monotheism is what? One God. Who is he? Allah. Do you have any problem? Because as Christians, we're monotheistic, aren't we? But what's the difference? Okay. Three and one. Jesus says in John chapter fourteen, "I am the way and the truth and the life." No one gets to the Father except through Allah, right? Is that what he says? No, that's not what he says, except through me. So as we look at worldviews, and then we look at Christianity, Trinitarianism, which is what? Three gods and one. I want somebody to explain that to me. We've got a few minutes, okay.
Two, one person.
Uh-huh. I have three what? Parts?
Three parts, and when you die, you're going to leave the others.
Okay.
So God can separate himself, and he's three parts.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I like to explain it by using the example of H2O. You can have water in the form of liquids, you can have water in the form of gas. And then you can have water in the form of solids.
Okay. Do we have any references in Scripture as to the Trinity that you could think of? We do, yeah. "When Jesus is baptized by John, this is my beloved Son," somebody said. "And what lit on him, a dove and the Holy Spirit." So we had the Father, the Son, and the Holy... The uniqueness of Christianity causes, if that's what you believe, causes the world out there to call us what? Narrow-minded. Yes, sir.
You know, you learn, you know, in lifetimes, you have trouble with it, because we look at it, and if you put it in a mathematical, you know, instead of looking at one plus one plus one equals three, you're looking at one, next one, next one, plus one.
Well, may I say good?
Okay, so on this chart, it will be helpful to you whenever you have a few hours to sit down and go over all of these, and I'm not gonna explain them all to you. Up here at the very top of your thing, you will see my notes to me. Look these up. Be familiar with each topic. Well, if we went through each topic, we wouldn't be here but about eight or ten more hours, because there's a lot to think about. But as we look at worldview, these are all variables that influence our worldview. These are all philosophies or theologies or different thoughts that man has had over the years. I think Susan can tell you, as being a school board person, member, that you'll get a lot of this. You'll see a lot of people who have different ideas. What is your first name? Sim, okay. Sim may be around a bunch of alumnus or alumni. And your thought in your training might have been the same, but something has transpired to make you different from others. And a lot of that, in generally, we think of that as our relationship to Christ. Has Christ changed any of you? Why don't we be Catholic here for a minute? I'm gonna put up the confessional, and I want you to just raise your hand and confess all your sins, okay? Well, we're not gonna do that. One is, I couldn't get anybody to go first. So I would say... No, yeah, but I'm talking about to me, I want you to confess. So take this and look at it, but also know that whenever you become a member of a school board, it's like being a member of society. There are gonna be different people with different attitudes. One of the things that America is beginning to lose, and this is just me telling you this, but I probably don't even have to say it, is a tolerance. You know, we've become very intolerant. And maybe it's through Twitter, or Tweeter, or whatever that guy's name is. Something's caused us to all of a sudden jump down other people's throat. God doesn't want us to go banging heads with our Bibles, but He does want us to represent who He is, and that's what's gonna be expected of you as we teach within these courses here about being a part of a school board and being a Christian. Okay? Any questions about any of these? So you got a lot to deal with. I'm the same thing your preacher or priest would tell you to do, you know? It's difficult to go out and to tell others how to do it when you don't know how to do it yourself. So conviction is a primary point. Okay, Harold?
I don't know where I heard it or saw it, television, internet, I don't know where, but someone was speaking about UNESCO, and I don't even remember what it stands for, but it's something about education. Universal or United Nations? Something about education. So the goal is to teach secularism and evolution. And this is like the plot of education, that is to be implemented globally.
When did that start?
A long time ago.
It started when Mr. and Mrs. Adam Smith, is where it started. You know, it really did, because you don't need to listen to the cops. It's good, and the apple tastes good. You think the apple tasted good, you better believe it tasted good, because she gave it to her husband. But secularism, I think if there's one thing that Jesus hates, it's legalism. It's a form that tells us, this is the way that you have to do it, because that's what the world tends to do. And that was free, that was divine.
Well, and because, let me piggyback just a moment, then you can... Because legalism, what does that lead to? Self-righteousness. And what does self-righteousness lead to? As far as Jesus is concerned, it's the number one topic He talked about. If you'll look at the Gospels, the number one issue He battled with, particularly with the Pharisees, the Sadducees, and the scribes, was self-righteousness.
Yeah, I don't wanna be nitpicky, but I struggle with the word tolerance, because I think tolerance is a value of secular humanism. I kinda, I understand, I think, what you mean when you use that word, but I just wanna say that I have a problem with that a little bit, because it tends, that word to me tends to mean that we accept all belief systems as of equal value. And I don't, and I don't think that all philosophies, as listed here, have equal value. I guess that's part of my worldview.
It is a part of your worldview. That's right.
I think there's a difference between tolerance and criticism. I think Jesus teaches us to be tolerant. Ephesians, Ephesians, Paul doesn't teach women to be doormats, he teaches them to be equal. I mean, I certainly, you know, I mean, love, patience, kindness, gentleness, all of those things are characteristics of the Spirit, and so, you know, I would accept any of those words, but I'm just saying, I struggle with that word tolerance, because I think that it kinda goes along with fairness. You know, when you're compared to everybody? It doesn't mean that you accept it. Yeah. And that's how I had that association.
Notice, the only people that use that word are the ones that want you to be tolerant of them.
Of them.
So there you go.
He was tolerant with the Pharisees, you know?
No, he wasn't. Whitewashed tombs.
Brood of snakes, and, you know, he probably, there's some things I recorded in Scripture he may have called.
Well, we won't go there.
And I know his attitude, but tolerance doesn't mean that you have to accept it.
Let me, let me ask a question. You're already beginning to think about next steps for you. So I was wondering, I'm wondering, are you thinking about personally coming to the next phase of our training? And I was wondering, are you ready to say, "Yes, I am," by showing your hand? This is not a commitment, but it is kind of a generalization. Are you thinking about coming to our next training? Would you raise your hand? Oh, my goodness, okay, great. Yeah, I'm glad you are, Charlie. Yeah. Yes. Yes, so you would, yes. There you go. There you go. Well, I would, I would encourage you to come simply for your own self-edification. At least you'd be more knowledgeable about what's going on. I would also say that you'd be more knowledgeable to be able to bring someone else along with you, but not to this particular training now, this go-around, but the next go-around, you know? All right, so I would suggest yes. Okay, here's, here's what I wanna do. I wanna give you a homework assignment. All good teachers give homework assignments. All good teachers give homework assignments. So, here's what I want you to do. I want you to do some research on one of these worldviews. And the next time we meet, we're gonna give you a case study, and I want you to defend the case study based upon the worldview that you take, all right? And so here's what we're gonna do. Since everyone, the majority of you said you were coming back, we're gonna number around, and we'll see how that goes around. I'm not gonna ask you to do Christianity. You should know Christianity. When you walked in the door, you should know Christianity. But there are five others. And so, Brother Jesse, would you take secularism? And, I'm sorry, Carrie? Rosie, Rosie, would you look at Marxism? And let's go on around to postmodernism, and let's go to New Spirituality, New Spirituality, and then Islam. And then Si, would you come back to secularism? And then Jean, would you do Marxism? And would you, Janice, would you do postmodernism? Are you coming back? Okay, postmodernism. So we've got New Spirituality and Islam. We've only got one person doing that. Would one of the others of you like to pick up? Okay, yes ma'am. Islam, okay. Anyone wanna pick up New Spirituality? And do two? All right, we'll just deal with that. Okay, great. I want you to do some research. The Internet's gonna be full of it. So you do research and come prepared to defend a case study based upon your perspective. Now, we're gonna have fun with that, okay? Because you're not gonna know everything about that worldview. But we're gonna have fun, and you're gonna be our teacher, and we're gonna be teaching, and it's gonna be a wonderful time of dialogue back and forth, and we're just gonna add quite a bit of time for that particular exercise. Yeah, yeah, and we'll have to set a time limit, but I think that'll be a fun exercise. Yes, ma'am? Yes, defend your... That's right, that's right, as though you were one of those. Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's look at spiritual support. You know, there is spiritual support, and we could, we could go on and on and on and on with a number of passages of Scripture that could support a worldview perspective, from a Christian perspective. Charlie has already mentioned the number one, and that's fourteen six of John, where Jesus says, "I am the way, the truth, and the life, and no man can come to the Father except through Me." There's another passage, a couple of that Paul has mentioned that are extremely applicable to worldview as well. And I love the one in Romans twelve and two, from the NLT. "Don't copy the behavior of the world and the customs of this world, but let God transform you into a new person by changing the way you think." Isn't that a wonderful translation? "Don't copy the behavior and the customs of this world, but let God transform you into a new person by changing the way you think." Paul also, in Colossians, addresses the issue from a perspective. "Don't let anyone capture you with empty philosophies..." Oh, my goodness. "...and high-sounding nonsense that come from human thinking and from spiritual powers of this world rather than from Christ." Is that not a powerful statement? "Don't let anyone capture your thinking with empty philosophies and high-sounding nonsense that comes from human thinking and from the, and from spiritual powers of this world rather than from Christ." The NLT is one of my favorite translations of Scripture. It is what I read, it's what I preach from. If you don't have a copy of it, I would encourage you to get it, because I can actually understand it. Yes, sir? It's right there, Colossians two eight. It's on your slide. It's Colossians. Yeah, right here, Colossians two eight. And the other was Romans twelve and two. Romans twelve and two, and Colossians two eight. Yeah. You should have that copy on your slide, don't you? Yeah, yeah, I think you do. Okay, now let's go to, now let's go to a very practical case study, all right? You've got Scripture support, you've got the definition of worldview, you've got a time when you gave a personal example from worldview. You've looked at multiple worldviews across the perspective of at least six of them, and we've looked at what Scripture has to say. Now, I want you to be a school board. You are on a particular school board. And we're gonna call this the Trinity School Board, because we're in Trinity Church. Okay, we're gonna call this the Trinity School Board. You're on the Trinity School Board, and here is what has come, well, I can't say that. Here's what's come up. "A petition has been signed by sixty-nine high school students stating that the name of Robert E. Lee High School needs to be changed because it represents a Confederate general who fought to support slavery during the Civil War." As a school board member, you have received seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine emails in support of the name change, and ninety-seven emails asking you to deny the name change. What and how does your worldview inform your decision as a school board member?
Well, there's quite a difference in the numbers here.
There is. There is.
Seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine versus ninety-seven?
Yes, ma'am. That's a lot. Signed by seventy-nine students, the petition. I believe that's right, seventy-nine? Sixty-nine.
That would not, the sixty-nine that signed the petition would not be as big a thing to me, point to me, as the voting, seven-eighty-nine versus ninety-seven. That would be more important. And my worldview would be, the majority rules when it comes to that much. If it's four to five, or five to seven, that's a little different, but this is one to eight.
Okay. Jean, yes, so your name, your hand up first.
I would kind of, kind of go along with what she said, except for the fact that, because I would, I mean, I would support democracy. My worldview is that we live in a society where majority rules and that sort of thing. So I would, I would certainly be influenced by that, but I'm also aware that it's also possible for a very active and vocal minority to generate a lot of activism and win it, that is, kind of falsely represents what the public really, really feels about the issue. And so I want more, I think, information than just how many emails that I receive. In addition to that, my worldview is also one of fiscal responsibility, and changing the name of a school is more than just taking one sign down, putting another sign. It's a very expensive proposition. And so I would wanna look at where the money is in the budget that allows me to change.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I see the majority and the minority of emails, high school students and all, but generally, didn't support slavery, he fought for slavery. But I would also, which is against Christian values. But I would also like to study his life and see his life in general, you know? Was he a Christian man, a godly man? That just happened to, for economic reasons, continue with slavery, because that's what everybody's doing then?
Or was he appointed in that position and had nothing to say about it?
Yeah. So, but I could see, just by looking at what's up there, that because he's fought to support slavery, which is not a Christian value, I could go with supporting the name change.
Okay. All right, someone else? Yes, ma'am?
I also would go back and study his life, because I've worked out with the Bible, we have to look at content. So we shouldn't just focus on one thing, have an overall view of a person, and what the times were at that, at that era. So I think all that would have been a factor as to his supporting slavery, which of course, there's no excuse for support slavery, but I would look at the content and bring that to the fore.
Okay. So you're saying, because of your worldview, you would wanna know the content of the historical setting and the content of his life? Before, okay? Yes, ma'am?
But then we have to go back to, it's not, I mean, of course, us getting educated on what he believed still doesn't, isn't gonna change the numbers. How can we, how can we go back and maybe call attention, or maybe have a meeting or something where we can educate them so they can make a better decision on what...
Who is them?
Whoever's gonna, the community people.
Okay, the community. The sixty-nine students and the seven-hundred and...
Yeah, and above that, I mean, because you never know what's behind all those numbers, who's really pushing that, how many people are pushing. Some people just don't even know or don't even care.
Okay.
So I think just educating a little bit more.
Okay. Someone else? Well, how does your worldview, Si?
Sim, I'm sorry. I mean, this happened, anyway, it will be studied, but my worldview is more conservative, and, you know, this is a politically correct activist movement there that was done. So I would, my worldview is against political correctness. I see in it some naivety from the students, you know, thinking, oh, we find one bad thing about a guy, and let's blow that all out of proportion, and what else do they know about? And I think it would, I would call for, not a quick response to this, but I would call for a measured, reflective response where there's maybe, maybe some of these kids can, like, we're doing a worldview study, taking different points of view, and having independent, maybe they oughta do some pros and cons, do some studying, do some presentation, learn more about it, have a discussion, a debate, a real debate, not just a quick emotional decision that's rash. The numbers is one thing, of course, but that's not gonna teach these kids, you know, about the broader PC movement and being quick to judge, and quick to crucify, and quick to tear down statues and all that. You know, that's not teaching those kids how to address all these names and statues and... and issues in our culture. I would, I'd want more debate on it, several meetings, bring people who have studied his life and his other statements, and they might be surprised, I mean, the kids might be surprised to find out all the, that he's a man of integrity and that he had some higher principles and that he, if he had slaves, I believe he freed them all, and I believe he stated that he fought more out of patriotism to his state, Virginia, you know, more than anything else. So there's more to him than the Confederacy supported slavery, you know, there's more to it than that. And our kids need to learn how to think critically and look at context and look at the whole history. And all that aside, does the Robert E. Lee High School today represent all that maybe generally represented in the past and the Confederacy represented in the past? Are we as a student body at this high school different? You know, what do we represent, what are our guys using? Does the name really define us? You know, I don't think most of the Robert E. Lee High School alumni think that that name makes them racist or makes them slave owners or makes them bigots or anything like that. So I mean, I think these kids' views need to be broadened a little bit.
Okay.
Having a big open debate would help get them a little bit.
I think Sam needs to be on school board.
I do too. Okay, now, now, thinking from a worldview, you have just been given a chart of worldviews. Which worldview most accurately represents the petition? And what's behind the petition? And what behind the petition is supported by a worldview?
It could be post-modernism and secularism, post-two worldviews.
Yes.
Post-modernism seeks to kind of throw out all tradition and establishment and just, you know, if you want to really, if you could change it, you know.
Look at, look at post-modernism from the ethics perspective. What does it say?
Cultural relevance.
Cultural relevantism. Can anybody say PC?
Yeah, I like, I like historical revisionist to, under post-modernism, you know, it is an attempt, I think, to revise history to some extent.
Yes.
Let's, let's just eliminate the fact that this ever happened. You can't do that.
And then the secularism, social progress, progress.
You know, maybe the question to ask is what difference will it make? Yeah. You know, when, oftentimes, when we see our world out there that doesn't respond like we do, we ask our question about them is, you know, what difference have you got and what difference are we got? You know, is it this type of issue that we want to deal with or is it, you know, when I was a counselor, I counseled a girl fourteen years old who was pregnant, her third time, that had two abortions. And the worldview might have been different from how I told her, but I believe that, I told her, I said, you know, God can make you a virgin, like physical, but mental. And we have a God that we need to show, and so, six years later, she came back to me and cried in my heart. See, that's, that's the kind of substance of whether Robert E. Lee owned slaves. It's not going to change this. But the morality of what kind of man wants to do.
Will, will the name change of a high school improve student academics?
Yeah, will it change who we are as a nation, who we are as a city, people? Does it change who the students are? Really, it's just kind of puts things more on the surface too.
Yes, ma'am.
Then the other question is, what would they change the name to?
Well, that's a whole nother ballgame, isn't it?
Yes.
And that's a whole nother ballgame the board had to deal with, isn't it? And what did they come up with? R E.
Yeah, E E.
R E, yeah.
Okay.
Um...
Leadership.
Lee High School, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
It's still Lee High School, but they, they use an acronym.
Yeah.
Leadership Excellence in Education. Yeah, that's cool.
Uh-huh.
But really, it was Jean who was really perceptive in this case.
Okay.
Because...
And how was he?
It actually, the whole issue was stirred up by somebody who was running for a state, a national office, and they were trying to get their name back out in the public and considered it there a while since they had, had their name in the public. And, I'll tell you where, I'll tell you where. Anyway, they, they were just trying to get their name back out there, so they sent a tweet out about Lee High School and its incorrectness, and that stirred the whole pot. And I'm not saying that, that it probably wouldn't have happened anyway, because it probably eventually would have happened, but honestly, it's like Jean said, you know, those numbers may not be really accurate because somebody stirred the pot, and that's exactly what happened. So...
The latest issue was dealing with the Texans and fought at the Alamo, whether they would be called heroes or not.
So the issue is, as a, what's the takeaway as a school board member? What's the takeaway from this, from this exercise?
Sticking with the, with a vision.
That's exactly right. Does it improve, support, and expand the vision? If it doesn't, should we be involved in it? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Just in, in, in terms of the vision, the vision for most of the, our, our student, uh...
Achievement.
Achievement, yeah. And so by changing the name, is it going to improve?
That's right, that's right. That's right.
Perfect.
Perfect. And then from a pragmatic standpoint, how many dollars, I believe it was one of those two over there standing, how many?
Dollars to change the name.
And so did that come from the national office? What did you call those dollars that were mandated that...
Uh, that wouldn't come from a bond.
No, it wouldn't come from a bond. Did it come from dollars that were given to us by the national? No. So it wasn't, it was right out of the ba, right out of the budget. So who's, what kid in what first grade is not going to get those supplies? Because we're doing that.
Back down because of the overreaction from somebody who just wanted...
Who wanted their name out. Yeah. Okay.
I can say that it shows not to be impulsive and to look at all sides of the issue and to look at it through, uh, the, the world, your worldview.
And don't forget the vision. Does it support the vision, our objectives for the board? And if it doesn't stand on that, eh, perspective? Okay, yes, ma'am, right quick.
My three beautiful granddaughters are vibration. Does their last name Rebus mean that they're Hispanic? Does that make them Hispanic, they're vibration? So it's just like the same principle, and there's more to a name than...
Than, that's exactly right, than ethnicity. That's right, okay. Let me give you some additional homework, for those of you who are coming back.
Better stop that.
I know.
Do you want us to come over?
It's a teacher, man, I'm telling you, that's what it is. We've listed some excellent resources for you here as far as for your continued study as far as worldview is concerned. I don't know if the name George Barna means anything to you, but to everyone who is in Christian ministry, it is a go-to resource. So I want to encourage you to look at Barna Research, and there's the website there. Summit Ministries, we've already talked about Summit Ministries, we've given you that chart that is from Summit Ministries. Summit Ministries is an organization that helps educate people worldwide on worldview. And they have a curriculum for middle school, junior high, and from junior high and high school, and I believe some elementary school, school, grade school children for worldview curriculum, but they have excellent resources. Dennison Forum. Jim Dennison is an ethicist and a former pastor in the Dallas area, and his material is absolutely incredible. You can trust his material. I would encourage you to look at that. Truth Encounter Ministries, Del Tackett. Del Tackett is an absolute God-sent to the Christian community on the subject of worldview. And he, he is featured on the next project, and that is the Truth Project. The Truth Project is a video-based curriculum that is from Focus on the Family, and Del Tackett is the teacher of that particular curriculum. In your churches, that would be wonderful curriculum to lead your adults in junior high and in middle, in, in high school, students through, to train people in how to understand worldview. That's excellent material. And then the book by Jeff Myers, The Secret Battle of Ideas About God. That is an excellent resource as well. So we commend those ideas to you as you look at continuing your education on worldview and the importance of understanding and being committed and grounded in your worldview as well as other worldviews concerning your leadership on a, on a school board. Okay? Ann, where do we go from here?
Well, are we going to wrap up?
I think that's what it is. Yeah, where do we go from here? Do you want to cover that or do you want me to?
Yeah, no, I will.
Okay, before I give it to Ann, were we going to write those things down?
I think so, maybe we're going to have a quiet about the school. Yeah, we're going to flip the green card over.
Okay.
And then after that, being able to wipe down.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, if you would, take another green card out, if you would, get a, those of you who are managing the boxes, get a, get another green card out.
Do you want to have the green card?
If you would.
That is not a student going to the principal's office.
Yeah, yeah. Get another green card out. And now I'd like for you to, based upon the content that we have covered today, I'd like for you to think about what are three characteristics of effective school board members?
Remember, we had you write down what you think a school board member should be like now that you've heard this.
How does that change?
It does.
Three characteristics of effective school boards based upon the presentation that you've heard today.
Now, the principal, Lindy, wants to go out in the hall. Yeah. And she said, okay. Did anyone have need of a name? No, I'm just kidding.
If you finish that, then take a white note card, get another white note card. Okay?
There's not enough note cards, let me know because we do have...
We've got another box over there that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you finish the green card with three characteristics of an effective school board member based upon what you've learned today, take the note card, the white note card, and at the top of the note card, write the word evaluation. I'm going to give you four questions, so you can number one to four. Is everybody ready for the questions? Okay. Question number one. How helpful was today's content on a scale of one to ten? One being of no value, ten being exceptional. On a scale of one to ten, how helpful was today's content? The second question. How would you rate the presenters on a scale of one to ten? How would you rate the presenters on a scale of one to ten? Number three. List the most helpful aspects of today's content to you. List the most helpful aspect of today's content to you. And you could do through three, four, however many you want to. Question number three. Number four. This is a yes or no. Do you think you will attend the phase two training? Let me go over the four questions again. How helpful was today's content on a scale of one to ten? Number two. How would you rate today's presenters on a scale of one to ten? Number three. List the most helpful aspect of today's content for you. And number four. Do you think you will attend the next session? Now, we don't want your name, so don't put your name on it. This is just an anonymous. We want a, we want a, an evaluation of how you think today was. Which leads us into where we go from here. Ms. Ann?
Well, I don't know if we ought to let them go there. They might make trouble.
Can you tell us whether the university, United Methodist Church...
Well, we might.
Okay.
Of course. Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you again for coming out in the rain, because that was a challenge, I'm sure, for all of us. But, you know, where do we go from here? Well, phase two is a more in-depth explanation of what school boards do. Actually, this morning, we just covered the surface. And so next time, even though we only have three hours, we, we want to go more in-depth with that and with worldview, because they gave you homework. Now, I do think Susan and I should get higher ratings because we did not give homework.
I didn't give homework, it was all...
So that's all I'm going to say about that. But anyway, next time, which is phase two, we will go into more depth as to, you know, what are some of the issues and maybe some real-life situations like the one we did with worldview? did with worldview today? Uh, just, uh, just to go a little bit deeper in that. Now, in order to come to Phase Two, you have to have been at Phase One, because we don't want to jump into the deep end until you've learned how to swim a little bit and walk in that shallow water. And, uh, and then in Phase Three, we hope to have campaign manager-type people here to talk about how do you put together a campaign? How do you raise money? Where do you start with all that? You know, you really feel called, you want to do it, but how do we get there? So, we want to, uh, bring in the experts to help you with that. And, uh, Phase Four is not, you don't have to come to a meeting, it's just that the four of us are here, if, say, one of you get elected, or all of you run for a school board and get elected, we want to be here as a support for you, because it takes a while before you feel comfortable in a new situation. And hopefully, by then, you'll feel comfortable with us, to say, we had this situation, you know, what should I do? Should I ask a question? Should I do this or do that? So, but, um, anyway, so next time is just more of the exciting things that you learned today, but just at a deeper level. So, thank you so much.